Alright, let's rock and roll. Good evening everyone and welcome to the Anaheim Elementary School District, October 14th Board Meeting. I am ASD Board President Paulo McCallas and I call this meeting to order at 5:30 PM. This meeting is being conducted telephonically and by means of live video broadcast on our Anaheim Elementary YouTube channel for members of the public. Board members and cabinet members will be video conferencing together to assist in managing the logistics of this meeting. For English, you may connect by phone as follows by calling 661-527-3028. When asked, type in the PIN, 918-589-439 followed by the pound sign. Para español, puede conectarse por teléfono de la siguiente manera: Llame al 4, 4, 3, 6, 7, 1, 8, 0, 0, 4. Cuando se le pida, presione en el PIN 9, 6, 1, 9, 5, 6, 5, 7, 2 y el símbolo pound. Any member of the public has an opportunity to address the board by submitting comments by 12:00 PM on Wednesday, October 14th, 2020, online via an electronic form as outlined in the Public Speakers portion of this agenda. Submissions will be read aloud during the board meeting by the board president or designee. Let's go ahead and begin with our board roll call. Board Member Ryan A. Ruelles.
Present.
Board Member Jackie Philbeck.
Good afternoon here.
Board Member Mark A. Lopez.
Present.
Board Clerk Juan G. Alvarez.
Present.
I am also present. So moving on to Item 1B. Public Speakers for Closed Session Agenda Items. Iris Camacho, Senior Administrative Assistant.
We have one public comment submitted for closed session by Alma Flores, AESD staff. The comment reads, "I work in preschool with three-year-old children. In my opinion, it is not mandatory for preschool children to go to school. It will make sense that older children to start school first, since older children can understand more safety rules than younger children. Holidays are coming when families gather together and there are more chances to spread COVID-19. I feel like it is harder to manage safety COVID-19 rules with younger children. The program expects for smaller children to sit on a desk and stay in their desk. Three-years-old can only pay attention and stay in their desk for short periods of time. I am concerned of my health because younger children are not going to follow social distance. One example that I have is the first days of school, children cry and us teachers have to comfort them by getting in their eye level, hugging, talking close to them. I feel like we should wait until older children start first and then we can follow a pattern from them." That's the end of the comment.
Thank you very much Iris. And that was our only comment tonight, right?
Yes, one for closed session, the only comment.
Perfect, thank you very much. Moving on to 2, Closed Session. The board will recess to closed session for discussion and/or action on the following items. Can I get a motion?
So moved, Ruelles.
So moved, I trust you, Ruelles. Can I get a second?
Second, Lopez.
Seconded by Trustee Lopez. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote, Trustee Ruelles.
Aye.
Trustee Philbeck.
Aye.
Trustee Lopez.
Aye.
Board Clerk Alvarez.
Aye.
I also vote aye, passes 5-0. Let's go to closed session, everyone. Good evening and welcome to the Anaheim Elementary School District, October 14th Board Meeting. I am ASD Board President Paulo McCallas and I call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. This meeting is being conducted telephonically by means of live video broadcast on our Anaheim Elementary YouTube channel for members of the public. Board members and cabinet members will be video conferencing together to assisting, to assist in the managing of the logistics of this meeting. For English, you may connect by phone as follows. Call 661-527-3028. When asked, type the PIN, 918-589-439 followed by the pound sign. Spanish interpretation, the board meeting is available to attend 10. Para español, puede conectarse por teléfono de la siguiente manera: Llame al 4, 4, 3, 6, 7, 1, 8, 0, 0, 4. Cuando se le pida, presione el PIN 9, 6, 1, 9, 5, 6, 5, 7, 2 y el símbolo pound. Now, board members, tonight all voting will be by roll call vote. When motioning or seconding an item, please state your name and for any items being discussed, please state your name before discussing the item. Thank you. Let's go ahead and begin with our flag salute. Dr. Downing, who will lead us tonight?
I will this evening. Dr. McCallas, please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is stand-
Alright everyone, please put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Alright, moving on to 3B. Introductions and Roll Call. Ryan A. Ruelles, Board Member.
Good evening. Did you hear me?
Give me one second, I think there's something wrong with my sound, everyone.
But everybody else-
I apologize sincerely.
Yes.
Ryan, can you say anything? I don't hear anything at all.
Uh, Dr. Paulo McCallas is the best trustee ever and is super cool.
I sincerely apologize, everyone, I'm having some technical difficulties. Let me try to see if I can uh, use my earphones. I apologize, Dr. Downing, I think you were saying the pledge.
No, that's fine, I'm glad you clarified.
Alright.
Can you hear us?
Wanna say something?
Aye. Dr. McCallas, can you hear us?
Maybe if he logged off and logged back on.
Yes, I think that's-
Janice, can you help him?
Oh. Yep, my volume's all the way up, thank you so much Iris. Uh, Trustee Ruelles, can you say something again?
Dr. McCallas, can you hear me?
Alright. Can I have one more person say something?
Hello, hello.
Good evening.
Alright everyone, I sincerely apologize for the technical difficulties. Right now I will be logging off and logging back on.
Thank you, Dr. McCallas.
It didn't happen to me this time.
Not this time. Dr. McCallas, can you hear us now?
Can he log on with his phone? He's muted.
Yes, I can hear you now, everyone, thank you and so sorry for the-
Thank you.
-technical difficulties.
No worries.
Alright, let's move on to Item 3B, Introductions and Roll Call. Board Member Ryan A. Ruelles.
Present.
Alright, Board Member Jackie Philbeck.
Good evening, everyone.
Board Member Mark A. Lopez.
Present, good evening.
Alright, followed by our Board Clerk Juan G. Alvarez.
Present.
I am also present. Uh, Board President Paulo McCallas. Uh, we also have our Superintendent, Dr. Christopher Downing.
Good evening, everyone.
Followed by our Assistant Superintendent of Ed Services, Dr. Mary Grace.
Good evening.
Dina Mellon, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
Good evening.
Followed by Jessie Chavaria, our Acting Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Services.
Good evening, everyone.
We also have Iris Camacho, our Senior Administrative Assistant.
Hi, everyone.
Followed by Mary Madrigal and Alina Rogue, our interpreters.
Good evening, everybody, Alina says good evening too.
Alright, welcome. We also have Janice Cato, our Technology Assistant.
Good evening, hello, everyone.
Alright, wonderful. Uh, let's go ahead and move on to a report of closed session actions taken, 3C, there is none. Now, before we go to the adoption of the agenda, please note that um, at the request of our administration, Item 8A.3, the agreement with Company Nurse LLC has been pulled. So, with that said, let's go ahead and move to our adoption of our agenda. Can I get a motion?
So moved, Ruelles.
So moved by Trustee Ruelles, can I get a second?
Philbeck, second.
Seconded by Trustee Philbeck, Discussion. Hearing none, board roll call vote, Trustee Ruelles.
Aye.
Trustee Philbeck.
Aye.
Trustee Lopez.
Aye.
Board Clerk Alvarez.
Aye.
I also vote aye, passes 5 to 0. Special Order of Business, there is none. So, that goes to number 5, our News and Updates. Let's go ahead and start with our Parent Leadership Group Updates. Uh, our DAC DILAC and it will be read by Dina, is that correct, Dr. Downing?
Iris Camacho is gonna read it.
Wonderful, thank you so much Iris.
The update was submitted by Bill Maruano, Parent Leader. It reads, "At our September DAC DILAC meeting, we received a presentation from Rhonda Robertson on blended and distant learning programs including EL programs, reclassification and English language proficiency assessments. We also provided input on the final review and approval of the learning continuity and attendance plan. On October 7th, all DAC DILAC parent members were invited to the LCAP meeting and provided input on school reopening plans. Our next DAC DILAC virtual meeting is Monday, October 19th at 2:00 PM. We will be having a virtual training for all DAC DILAC parent members on Monday, October 26th at 2:00 PM."
Wonderful, and we also have a update with AEEA, correct, our association?
Yes, and Dina Mellon will read, uh, we actually have updates from all three associations.
Okay, wonderful.
Okay, good evening, from Faith Daverin, AEA President. "Good evening, board members and cabinet. AEA would like to commend the board on making safety your number-one priority. Our members deeply appreciate the comprehensive plans that have been developed to ensure that our employees and students return to their school sites under the safest conditions possible following further declines in community COVID levels. While safety is important, it is also important to adequately plan for the return to a blended learning model involving both in-person and at-home instruction. According to a survey conducted by AEA earlier this month, 79% of our members are spending two or more hours daily planning for synchronous learning. 65% spend an additional two or more hours in daily planning for asynchronous learning. This is four or more hours spent each day outside of teaching, office hours, meetings, and parent contact, planning for just one day of student learning. 64% of our members also reported that they are working more than four hours each weekend to catch up on what could not be accomplished Monday through Friday. Employees are stretched beyond capacity with no end in sight for a decrease in expectations or workload. While the return to the blended learning model is a positive step towards some normality, we need to be cautious. Blended learning model schedules may look straightforward and relatively simple on paper, but the actual implementation is going to be very time-consuming and complicated. While focusing on safety and logistics, the district must plan for a teaching and learning model that does not continue to overwhelm both teachers and students. AEA supports returning to in-person learning under Option 2 as recommended by the School Reopening Advisory Committee. Option 2 provides the necessary time to prepare and plan for a safe and successful return to in-person learning." Daverin, AEA President. The second submission is from Lisa Walde, CSA President. "Good evening, President McCallas, members of the board, and Mr. Downing and team. At last night's CSA Chapter 54 meeting, our main topic was the AESD proposed reopening plan. Although our members were receptive to the plan, they are nervous. They are nervous because they didn't get enough concrete answers from the plan about how the reopening would affect their day-to-day activities and job duties. This is understandable, as this is new territory for you, members, and all staff. We have included some suggestions and a list of concerns to assist our administration in alaying these concerns. There were major concerns from our custodial and preschool staff. Some of these questions could be alayed by providing pictures of the classrooms with the new equipment in place, so that they have an idea of how they will be able to perform their duties. Custodial concerns focus on the workload. Even though less staff and students will be on campus, the physical layout, excuse me, the physical layout of the campus remains the same and thus the general workload also remains the same. However, the additional cleaning regimen has increased considerably. How will they be able to accommodate these additional duties into their current schedule? How can they add to their already full plate? Will there be additional support provided to support the additional duties? Will the district be providing additional supplies along with a regular supply order to accommodate the new cleaning schedule? Preschool concerns focused on the layout of the classes, support for the students, and cleaning of common equipment used with preschoolers. A lot of these questions show a need for a group meeting to discuss the issues that concern all our members that interact with students and parents. We are formally requesting such meetings take place as soon as possible with preschool teachers, instructional assistants, FSAs, and support staff, so they will feel comfortable with the plan to move ahead towards reopening before the start date of the preschool program. We recommend similar meetings with all of our members before the various groups come back on campus. Our classified staff is supportive of a plan to reopen our schools. However, they need more information to feel comfortable about the plans in place to support the staff once students arrive. Thank you, Lisa Walde, CSA Chapter 54 President." The last interlude comes from Emma Robles, ASMA President. "Good evening, board members and cabinet. As the ASMA President, I would like to share with you that ASMA is in support of the reopening plan AESD has proposed. The dates proposed will give plenty of time to ensure safety for all at each site, for all involved, students, staff, and parents. Thank you for your time and consideration of the proposed reopening plan. Dr. Emma Robles, ASMA President."
Alright, thank you very much. Moving on to 5C, District News and Updates with our Communications and Public Information. There are no district news and updates for tonight. Moving on to 6, Public Speakers, Speakers on Agenda or Non-Agenda Items. Iris Camacho, Senior Administrative Assistant.
We received a total of 13 public comments and I will begin with the first one, submitted by Vanessa Rosas Vera. She's an AESD parent. "My daughter is in DLI at Price. I am not ready to send her back to school due to family members' underlying health conditions and risks. Under the plan presented for school reopen, my only option would be to take my daughter out of the DLI program and place her in the virtual academy. She would lose her place as a DLI student at Price, which is not fair. This is not an equitable option for my child. Also, it takes time for students to get acclimated to their teachers. Under the plan presented, my child would have to go to a new teacher. The new teacher will not know my child and her needs as a student. If the plan is to reopen in January, my child would go to a new teacher mid-year, which again is not equitable for her learning needs. As we know, it takes time to get to know where our children are and what their needs are. Surrounding districts have plans for students to stay with their current teacher regardless of in-person or virtual instruction. I want an equitable option for my child. I do not want my child to lose her place at Price. I do not want to be forced to make a decision that I am not comfortable with, that puts my child and family at risk for exposure. Anaheim can do better. Our families and community deserve better. I urge you to vote against the plan presented and reconvene with this in mind. I have communicated these concerns to my school principal and district personnel, however, have not been given better options. Please feel free to reach out to me." The next comment is submitted by Janet Quintana, AESD Staff. "Good evening, board members and AESD community. I would like to bring out some points in regards to the district's proposed reopening plan for our schools. I am an AESD employee working in the Early Childhood Department, currently as a preschool IA. First of all, we can all agree that in a perfect scenario, we would all like to have schools open. Unfortunately, with COVID-19, it's not possible. As much as we would love to be doing in-person teaching, I believe that premature reopening of the schools will accelerate the spread of the virus in our communities. School reopening, even if it's just one day a week, will cause more interactions between community members. Children will see their friends at school, teachers will be out and about more often, traveling to gas stations and then into classrooms. Parents, bus drivers, kitchen staff, and custodians will all have increased exposure to the virus in addition to possibly bringing it home to their families. Although the proposed plan includes safety measures and screening procedures, it does not guarantee that virus infection will be prevented, but rather reduce the risk. Both of the options for the reopening proposed plan include our youngest population, our preschool students, to come back on campus first. The required social distancing is not developmentally appropriate for young children and will be difficult to follow. For decades, we have been teaching our children to share, make friends, care for each other, make connections, and work as a team. Now, with the safety guidelines and social distancing, our children will not be able to be next to each other. They will not have the opportunity to socialize, share, work collaboratively, or even play together. The emotional safety of our school will be lost. The children in our classrooms think of our school as a place where they are greeted at the door every morning with a smile and hug or high-five from their teacher. This warmth and sense of caring that we all strive to create in the classroom will be replaced with masked faces and cold distant waves. For now, at least, I can smile at my students while teaching remotely. Just like most teachers and educators out there, I would rather be instructing physically in the classroom, but I want to do it when it's safe to do so. After all, our main priority, especially during these times, is to keep our children, teachers, and community safe and healthy. Thank you." The next comment was submitted by Jennifer Ramos, AESD Staff. "I am writing to express- Dear AESD Board Members, I am writing to express my deep concern regarding your recent proposed reopening plan. I am currently an amazing AESD employee in the Early Childhood Education Department as a preschool teacher. Let me start by saying, there is nothing I miss more than being in a classroom full of overly excited, eager-to-learn, curious preschoolers. However, returning to campus prematurely and with such extreme limitations and restrictions sounds more damaging to children. Being an educator of young children, I've seen firsthand how children learn best. Hands-on activities, ability to explore freely, inviting warm environment. These are just the key components of a successful learning environment. So we must ask ourselves if that's what we are ready to safely provide our community's children. Seeing how we will be welcoming our children back to campus doesn't seem to be an inviting space. It is filled with limitations and restrictions which will not provide the best learning environment. If my son was younger and I was asked to bring him back to campus, I would have to say with a heavy heart, no. The inviting and enriching environment that I know we can and have provided is not what we are welcoming our children back to. Limitations and restrictions are not the best way to learn of learning. So I ask you to continue to vote with your heart and science in mind, keep our children, their families, and their teachers safe until we know we are able to provide the best, safe, enriching environment. Let us continue to provide distance learning, guidance, and support virtually. Thank you, a proud AESD employee." The next comment is submitted by Maria Alejo, AESD Staff. "Good evening, Superintendent Downing, board, and cabinet. Thank you for continuing to support families and staff during these trying times. Your strong compassionate leadership is appreciated and does not go unnoticed. I am writing today because I am worried for my health, the health of my colleagues, the health of my family, and the health of my students and their families. I teach in the 92805 ZIP code of our district and as you know, we continue to be among the highest testing positivity percent in the county. I am most concerned because the preschool children will be the first to return to school in November and they are the youngest and least likely to keep safe distance and their mask on, which leads to a greater risk of exposure and thus contracting of COVID-19 and any other virus for that matter. I trust that you will make the best decisions based on data provided by epidemiologists and your own feelings for the safety of all our children, families, staff, but urge you to also think of the emotional and psychological implications of reopening our schools in frightening conditions due to this pandemic. Thank you for your time and for the opportunity to address you today. Respectfully, Maria Alejo." The next comment is submitted by Jessica Fitzgerald, AESD Staff. "Good evening, members of the board. First, I would like to say thank you for your hard work and dedication through these difficult times. I am writing to you because I am worried for my family and also the members of our community, our students, our staff, and their families. My family was exposed to COVID-19 by other family members and we were lucky that in my household, we did not contract COVID-19. But my other family was not so lucky and had very difficult times fighting the virus with the help of medical staff in the hospital in the ICU unit. I've seen firsthand how awful it can be. As a preschool IA and being back in the classroom with our young students who will struggle to keep a mask on and keep their distance, myself and others are exposed. The last thing I would want is to expose my family to COVID-19 again. I have a son who was born with CTGA, Corrected Transposition of the Great Arteries. He is our living miracle. I would hate to have him contract this deadly virus. I chose to keep him home on remote learning for his safety. If school reopen and preschool educators go back, they and myself will be at risk of exposure and I could possibly expose my son and family again. As you know, the 92805 area that I teach in continues to have the highest testing positive results in the county. I would hate to see these numbers go up. I feel it's too soon and with the flu season approaching, we will be at higher risk and things could become worse. Our hospitals could again end up in overload. This could be a huge negative trickle effect in our city of Anaheim. I trust that you will make the best decisions based on science and facts. Thank you all for your time, respectfully, Jessica Fitzgerald." The next comment submitted by Bertha Soto, AESD Staff. "Dear AESD Board Members, I, as an employee from AESD, cannot hide that I am afraid to return to work after just reading this weekend the most current information on the rising COVID-19 cases in Anaheim. With all my years of experience working with preschool children, I cannot see them keeping on a mask for three hours or keeping a safe distance from others for the sake of-" I cannot see them keeping on a mask for three hours or keeping a safe distance from others for the safety of all. With the flu season also just around the corner, this will make returning to school in person even worse. Please know that many of our students in general live with elderly family members. Let's not spread this virus, but help contain or stop it being proactive and not reopening schools until it is a hundred percent safe to do so for all students, families, and staff. I pray you will vote for the best interest of all. Thank you all for your continued dedication. Respectfully, Bertha Soto. The next comment submitted by Appendor Caru, A E S D staff. I wonder if reopening schools would be safer at this time as virus cases are spiking up and flu season is ahead. Especially younger students would not be able to follow six feet distance, keep masks, and most of other current health guidelines. I strongly recommend to reconsider about learning at school site than distance. The next comment submitted by Consuelo Diaz, A E S D staff. When preschool staff returns to their homeschool, will the district provide coronaviruses testing for the preschool staff? And will a procedure? Sorry. Will a procedure be in place for tracking and tracing coronaviruses within the district? Next comment submitted by Pre-K Educator, an A E S D staff. Greetings, board members. I am a preschool educator that has the privilege of serving families in the Anaheim community for eight years. Many of us in the field can say we are experts at what we do best, which is educating our pre-K students. One very important component involves the student's social and emotional well-being. We strive to make this our priority. As any parent or educator has experienced, the first day of traditional school is met with much emotion for young ones. Many pre-K students cry and experience a period of separation anxiety during this transition. As educators, we strive to provide comfort and care in these moments. Now please envision this scenario. Some students will scream, cry, use every force in their body to not be removed from their parents. Now imagine this occurring amidst a pandemic with social distancing protocols in place. How can a teacher provide a hug or a smile of comfort to reassure this child they will be okay all the while wearing a mask and face shield? Despite our most sincere and diligent efforts to maintain the health and safety of our classroom, three-to-four-year-old children wearing and keeping a mask on throughout the entire duration of the classroom hours will be an incredible task. I plead to you, board members, to understand the situation we are being asked to be put into, risking our health and possibly our life and the health and lives of those in our households and the greater community. As educators, we have proven to go above and beyond by being flexible to help our students and families feel supported throughout the difficult times. I sincerely request to please consider reviewing all the risk factors and making your aim to returning for in-person instruction when it is a hundred percent safe. Thank you for all your endeavors in this matter. Sincerely, a very concerned pre-K educator. The next comment was submitted by Melissa Noah, A E S D staff. At this time, I don't feel that I am comfortable with returning to the classroom. I feel that, given our location, the cases of COVID nineteen are still very high and that we're putting ourselves at risk as well as our students. I miss my students and cannot wait to return to some type of normalcy, but I just don't feel we are there yet. Thank you for listening and doing all that you have done to serve our children and families. The next comment was submitted by Melissa Cabrera, A E S D staff. To whom it may concern, I am a preschool teacher, and I can honestly say I love my job, not because of the money, but because it truly brings me joy to teach. Prior to teaching, I was nursing, I was a nursing student at UCLA Ronald Reagan Hospital and worked in the N I C U department. Seeing such tiny humans so vulnerable made me realize that I did not want to, that I did want to help children, but not necessarily in this way. After much consideration, I left nursing school and decided to volunteer at a preschool, which made me fall in love with this teaching career. Something that I've learned from children is that they do not worry about being great or more important than others. Their innocence is so big that it's our job to protect them in every way. This is why I strongly believe that it is not the right time to allow our students to go back to school yet. They trust us, adults, to tell them it will be okay, that nothing will happen. But how can we say that when we are still unsure of the unknown that is happening? Studies show that this pandemic is still not decreasing. As a matter of fact, Anaheim continues to be in tier one, and if that is not alarming to you, then you should reconsider your moral values. Protection of our children should be our main concern, not finding ways to save money. Because when it is our time to pass away, God does not care about how much money or wealth we have gained on earth. He is going to see what is in each of our hearts and how we cared for each other. Therefore, I ask for you to truly reconsider reopening the school in the future because this will not only affect the students, but the staff as well. Are you ready to replace all the staff you are about to lose over greed and fame? Sincerely, Melissa. The next comment was submitted by Norma Servian, A E S D staff. I don't feel secure going back until there is a vaccine available for everyone, or at least until the spread stops. I have my mother who lives with me and is a diabetic with other health conditions. We have been really taking care of ourselves, and I would not want to be the one taking the virus home. Please listen to our safety requests. The next and final comment submitted by Idalia Marlet, Bracamontes de Cardenas reads. She is an A E S D staff. The reopening plan for November makes me feel unsafe as a preschool teacher. I feel that as a district, all grades including preschool, TK, and Kinder should start together next year. My question is, why is preschool, TK, and Kinder starting first? And that concludes the public portion.
Thank you very much, Iris, for reading that. All right. Let's move on to seven. School reopening advisory committee recommendation. Dr. Christopher Downing, Superintendent Tracy Golden, our senior director of school safety and operations, Dr. Daniel Parker, an assistant professor at UC Irvine. And before they begin, presentations will be posted on the district website, the Board of Education page, starting tomorrow.
Good evening, Dr. McCullough and board members, and good evening to the Anaheim community. This evening, Iris Camacho is going to present on our behalf, and we will share with you the A E S D school reopening plan. Iris, if you will pull up the presentation. Thank you. Next slide, Iris. So today's plan is based on resources that have been provided from various sources, including Governor Newsom, the California Department of Education, California Department of Public Health, Orange County Department of Ed, Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, O C Healthcare Agency, Occupational Safety and Health Administration, California State COVID nineteen website, as well as the Environmental Protection Agency. Next slide, please. So this slide outlines for you California's blueprint for a safer economy. So there are four tiers within the blueprint. Purple or widespread is the lowest tier. Next is substantial, and as you can see in substantial, schools can reopen for in-person instructions once their county has been in the red tier for at least two weeks. Schools must follow C D P H reopening guidance. If there continues to be progress within Orange County, and Orange County is currently in the red, the county would advance to the moderate tier, and with continued improvement, end up in the minimal tier or the highest tier. Now, while Orange County is in the red, Anaheim is in the purple. And we have been consistent in messaging with our community and stakeholders that there is a difference with the data in Anaheim and Santa Ana versus all of Orange County. What we are finding, however, is that the data is stabilizing. And this evening, we will have a presentation from Dr. Daniel Parker of U C I to talk about the trend data here in Anaheim. Next slide, please. This is a planning timeline that has identified key dates as part of this dismissal of our schools. So on this particular graphic, it outlines that on April twenty-eighth, the governor announced that schools during stage two with modifications and considerations for maintaining students and staff's safety. Something that is highlighted on this slide is also our school reopening advisory committee process. And as you may remember, between May nineteenth and June second, we engaged in a number of different stakeholder meetings similar to the process taken this time. And on June tenth, the A E S D board approved the S R A C reopening recommendations from this spring. Next slide. Thank you. This continues the timeline. What's key on here is on September eighth. Again, as we outlined, Orange County moved into the substantial or red tier, which means that schools may reopen for in-person instruction on September twenty-second if the county meets the metric criteria for two straight weeks, which it did. However, we note Anaheim and Santa Ana data remained higher than the remainder of Orange County. On October sixth, we reconvened our school reopening advisory committee to identify proposed dates to safely reopen our schools for in-person blended learning. And tonight, we are presenting this recommendation to the board for your consideration. Next slide, please. Just as a reminder, on June tenth, the board approved a two-tiered approach. The first one being the creation of a new distance learning-only school. And we're proud to say that the Anaheim Elementary Online Academy now has over three hundred and fifty students who participate on a day-to-day basis. The second part was that we would engage in blended learning. And though we planned to reopen on August thirteenth, we identified a schedule that would call for every student to be on-site two days per week with three days of distance learning and student schedules of Monday and Wednesday or Tuesday and Thursday. Next slide, please. Senate Bill ninety-eight. Senate Bill ninety-eight was signed into law on June twenty-ninth, and Senate Bill ninety-eight addresses distance learning across the state. Next slide. These are the legal requirements that our district is required to meet every single day that we provide distance learning. It calls for daily live interaction, academic and other supports designed to address the needs of all students. We are required to complete weekly engagement records for every student, documenting synchronous and asynchronous instruction, verifying their daily participation, and tracking their assignments. We are required to have access for all students to connectivity and devices adequate to participate in the educational program, to document daily attendance, including participation in online activities, and to develop written procedures for tiered re-engagement strategies for all students who are absent for more than three school days in a week. I am proud to say we are meeting all legal requirements outlined in Senate Bill ninety-eight. Next slide. So at this time, everyone, I would like to introduce Dr. Daniel Parker, who is an assistant professor at the University of California Irvine, and he is going to talk to us about data in Anaheim. Dr. Parker, thank you for joining us.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. And I presume you have my slides, someone has my slides.
Yes, they're loaded, so we'll advance to the next one, and then you just tell us when to advance.
Okay, great. Okay, so I believe I have not met, but presented in front of many of you before. But my name's Daniel Parker. I'm an infectious disease epidemiologist and an assistant professor in public health with a courtesy appointment in epidemiology at UC Irvine. Yeah, so, next slide, please. So one thing that I think is really important to remember with this disease is that it moves really, really quickly. So the time between when someone becomes infected and starts to develop symptoms can be as fast as five days. Really quickly. Infectiousness, so the person, so when you can actually spread the disease after you've become infected, can actually begin two days before that, so around three days. After you've become infected, you could start spreading the disease before you even feel symptoms. This gives us about three days in between the time at which you've come into contact with somebody who's infectious and when you could be spreading the disease. And taken together, this means that the disease, the disease situation can change really quickly.
Dr. Parker, just to clarify, so if a student is temperature-checked, that's not showing symptoms.
That's right.
That student could still spread the disease.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, and some people who, so some people will develop symptoms later. Some people may never develop symptoms or only very mild symptoms, but could still spread the disease. So this here, it means that, well, it's a tricky disease because you can spread it without even knowing you have it. It moves really quickly. The situation can change really quickly. And because of the incubation period here, so you've got five days, it could even be up to almost two weeks before you start showing symptoms. And you could have a lag in cases of a week to, when it was really bad in Orange County, it was almost, I think it was like ten days, almost two weeks, that we were getting a lag in reports from cases. So what that means is, the situation that you're seeing right now is the product of what happened two weeks to a month prior. So you have to keep that in mind. What you're seeing right now, that's in the past already. What's the transmission system, the transmission that's happening right now, you'll see that a couple of weeks in the future. So, but it can change really quickly. Next slide, please. Another thing that has come out more recently, especially since my last presentation back in July. At that time, I had a hypothesis that children could become infected just like everybody else. And the reason that we were seeing less cases was because they tended to have less severe symptoms, less severe disease outcomes. And this is now confirmed. So these data here are from a relatively new paper in Science. I think it came out two weeks ago. This is from a really large study that came out of India where they did lots of contact tracing. And what I really would like you to focus on is where I've got the green box. These are children. The first row here is children from zero to four years old. The second row is from children from five to seventeen years old. And these are cases, so confirmed cases of COVID nineteen. In the zero-to-four-year-olds, you can see there were seven hundred and forty-nine of them. And in the five-to-seventeen-year-olds, there are five thousand two hundred and fifty. Of those cases, they were able to identify almost seven thousand contacts for the zero-to-four-year-olds and almost fifty thousand contacts for the five-to-seventeen-year-olds. So it's a really big study. They tested those contacts, and they found that six percent of the contacts that they found for the zero-to-four-year-olds were positive, had COVID nineteen, and seven percent of the five-to-seventeen-year-olds were positive. And these are just the contacts that they were able to identify and test, right? So what this means is, one, children do get infections. This is confirmed. And two, children can also spread infections. So these are two important things to consider, right? And even though, next slide, please. Yeah, so I guess I would add to that previous slide. Even though children have less severe symptoms, some do have severe disease. And of concern here as well is that children will be coming into contact with others, right? Teachers, staff, their family members at home, all of whom may be at greater risk of developing severe disease from COVID nineteen. Next slide, please. So this plot here, this comes from a website that a couple of my colleagues and I keep up. You can see there's a URL on the bottom, so if you'd like to keep up with this, we try to update this each week. It's a little bit of a lag here from what you see because the data come in a little bit slow. So we tend to not trust it until it's within two weeks. So some of the cases move in slowly. So some of the cases move in slowly. Um, the, the orange, the orange line that you see there, um, this is for Orange County. Some of the other counties are included just for comparison, like Los Angeles County is in green. Um, you can see they had consistently more cases than us. Um, you can see that peak that, that hit us in June, um, went through much of July, and now is backed down a little bit lower. Um, important to remember here, though, is that there is heterogeneity, right? So this is, this is, these are, these are cases per million people. Um, and for, for a seven-day moving average here, um, for all of Orange County. But within Orange County, and you'll see this in the maps here in a bit, within Orange County, there are some places that had much lower than that. And there are some places that had much higher caseloads than that, right? So a couple of places in Orange County really drive most of this. Uh, next slide, please. And you can see that here. So these are, this is number of confirmed cases per 100,000 people, also a seven-day moving average. And we've broken this out by the major cities within, within Orange County. Um, so what I'm showing is, uh, actually the, the arrow is a little bit off. I should have, should have corrected this. So Anaheim is the light blue, not the dark blue. Garden Grove is the dark blue here. So looking at Anaheim, you can see uh, that both Anaheim and Santa Ana were much higher than, than the other major cities. And if, if you were to, if you were to have uh, uh, some of the other places in here like Newport Beach, then, then you would see it's even lower than, than, than many of these, more, more like Irvine. Right? And I think important, important to remember here is to just kind of, if you could mentally zoom in to, to May um, and look at what's going on there. It's looking a little bit flat. At that time, it wasn't real clear whether or not it was going up or down. It could, you know, it's kind of wiggling along. Um, but then, but then around mid-June, it just kind of took off. Early to mid-June, it just took off and, and shot up. And now if you kind of zoom in on September and think about where we are now, it's, it's obviously much, much better than it was back in June and July. Um, but it's not, it's not real low, and it's not real clear where it's going yet. Um, and we're getting into the cold season, if you would. People are going to be spending more time indoors, um, in closed spaces with more people, most likely. Um, so the, the potential is there for, for cases to take off again. Right? So, so keep, keep that in mind. This can change really fast. We could see it again. It's, it's much better now, but it could change fast. Uh, next slide, please. Um, I, I don't need to go into details on this. This, this is also from the website. Uh, we're showing positivity on the top left there, um, and uh, uh, the caseloads that I was just zooming in on the, on the bottom left there. Um, yeah, next slide, please. So, so what would be important here is to kind of zoom in and look at the, at the maps, how, how the geographic distribution of this is, has worked out over time. Uh, next slide, please. So the maps that I'm going to show you here, just to kind of orient you to the, the color scheme. Uh, the lower caseloads are in a yellow color. So that's places that had zero to five cases per 100,000 people per week. Um, and then the dark purple, uh, the dark blue, dark purple color, those are places that had 120 or more cases per 100,000 people per week. Right? So next, next slide. So if we think way back to March, um, and you can, you can see that the uh, Anaheim I've outlined with kind of a, a white line there at the top there. So way back in March when this first started, it kind of started taking off mid-March. Um, there were some clusters along the coastal areas. So, so Laguna Beach, Newport Beach, those areas. Uh, but that quickly changed. Uh, next slide. So in April, you can start to see there is some clustering that's occurring in Santa Ana and the Santa Ana area. Next slide, please. In May, you can see a big cluster. You can see it's starting to get, starting to get darker up in that, that north central area. Santa Ana especially, but also starting to get a little bit darker in Anaheim there. Next slide. And in June, uh, so, so when the peak is really taken off, you can see you have some major clusters going on here. So Anaheim, Santa Ana, both, uh, really high caseloads of the disease. Uh, next slide. July continues, uh, the cluster kind of moved together. Um, and then, and then if you remember back to the line plot, so towards the end of July, you start seeing the cases go down. Uh, next slide, please. And so in August, you can see it's, it's extremely heterogeneous still. Um, you, you've got high caseloads in, in much of Anaheim, um, Santa Ana as well. And then, uh, next slide, please. So September, so he, here is essentially where we're at now. Um, so it's much better than, than in June and July, of course. But, but you can see that there are still some pretty high caseload areas in Anaheim and Santa Ana still. Right? Um, so keep that in mind. There's a lot of, there's, there's heterogeneity over time, of course. Um, but if you, if you kind of zoom in at the zip code level, and if we had data at more micro scale, you'd see more heterogeneity even within the zip codes. Um, so there are places in Anaheim that still have high caseloads, right? Even though it's looking much better now. Uh, next slide. Okay, so, so what does this, what does this all mean? Um, as with all infectious diseases, uh, COVID-19 is not distributed evenly across the landscape, not distributed evenly within populations. Um, there are still hotspots of COVID-19 in parts of Orange County, even though the situation's much better. Um, and, and that includes in Anaheim and, and in Santa Ana. Um, going back to some of the first slides there, we, we know now for sure, children can get infected. And while they tend to have milder disease outcomes, they can spread the disease to, to teachers, to staff, to family members who are more likely to have severe outcomes. I think these things are important to, to consider, um, given the difficult decisions that you all have to make. Um, next slide, I believe, I believe that's, that's it. Yeah, so, so um, I, I hope this is informative and uh, I can try to answer any questions that you may have.
Dr. Parker, thank you so much, uh, for that. Um, now, uh, you know, as an epidemiologist, uh, and you were talking earlier about the cold season coming up. Um, what are your predictions? I know there's a lot of factors to consider with regards to Orange County, uh, politics and uh, just, there's a lot, right? But from the epidemiologist standpoint, in doing comparative studies between other countries, also knowing that there's different contexts. What is your prediction with the rates that will happen?
My, uh, so if I, if I'm kind of peering into the crystal ball, uh, my guess is that we'll see, we'll see an increase in cases, um, in, in the upcoming weeks to months. Yeah. Um, I, I hope I'm wrong, but my, my hunch is that that's what will happen.
Thank you. I hope you're wrong too, but um, I, I value a science, uh, epidemiology, uh, especially since you are doing research right here in Orange County. Uh, so thank you very much for your presentation.
And I would add, uh, uh, I might add to that. It's not really just a, I say crystal ball. Um, we're working on some models that we update each week. Um, positivity's not going down. Like, it, it would be nice to see positivity like decreasing a lot. It's not. Um, and hospitalizations are kind of trending upwards a little bit. Uh, so it's not, we're not seeing a, a spike, I wouldn't say, but those things make me a little bit uneasy, make me think that we, we could see something in, in upcoming weeks.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Board members, do you have any questions? Go ahead, Trustee Alvarez.
Hello, Dr. Parker. Thank you for the information. Um, I did some research on pandemic of 1918. And you have a lot of knowledge, background knowledge on uh, case studies of that situation. Um, and one, one thing I was reading was the idea of the, the second wave of spread in that situation was the mobilization of troops, um, and the movement of people like that worldwide. My concern is that we're creating the mobilization of troops with schoolchildren right now. And then school to cause that wave. And I believe what you just kind of reiterated, that we're expecting a spike might be a similar situation. But my question to you with regards to that past pandemic is, as scientists, what, what did scientists identify as the cause for that pandemic to kind of uh, whittle away and kind of find where it wasn't no longer a, a social uh, dilemma, right? Because at some point, people weren't concerned about that pandemic anymore. Society kind of changed into whatever they forgot about it. What is the one thing or what are the things that we are looking for in the, in the realm of science? To identify when we think it's kind of safe?
So there's not an easy answer for that, really. Um, at that time, they didn't have vaccines for, for influenza. Now we do. That's, that's a good thing. Um, so, but, but on the other hand, for, what, what does make this very similar? I mean, this is, this is the biggest pandemic that we've seen since, since then, of course, right? Um, at that time, though, you know, there were, there were several waves and that same strain um, was likely with us until the 1950s. Um, but that, that is a circumstance in which you would have seen, probably seeing a lot of talk about herd immunity. Um, some of it's, uh, some of it is utter nonsense. It's not, it's not what anybody, the type of herd immunity you're hearing people talk about would be devastating. But that is what you saw with, with that influenza pandemic. You know, more people died from that than, than the World War, right? So that's, that, that's what happens when you get actual herd immunity without a vaccine, right? So, so the, the easy, or the easy part of that answer is, I mean, so many people died that, that, um, you know, everybody was exposed. So many people died that eventually there was herd immunity. But it took a long time and many, many people died from it. Um, now, we're better, we, we, we have, we have modern medicine. We can make vaccines. Hopefully, we can get a vaccine together for this at some point. Um, but that, um, uh, there, there's no real easy answer to that. Basically, the answer is, um, it was, it was a devastating disease that took a long time, was with us for a long time and killed many, many, many people.
So we're, we're looking for a vaccine, basically, and that's when I think society might not look at it as a danger?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, I would be surprised if we go back to what we are remembering is normal. Um, even when there is a vaccine, even when or if there is a vaccine, um, because you're going to have delivery issues. It's, um, even now with the, with influenza vaccine, it's, it's safe and people get it every year and, um, you know, it's not that big of a deal. It's still difficult to, to reach a sizable chunk of the population with that influenza vaccine. We're going to have the same troubles with a brand-new vaccine. We're going to have to roll it out. It's going to be delivery issues. Some people are not going to want to take it. It's going to be, it's going to be complicated. So even, even when there is a vaccine, um, there will be, we'll still need to be, we'll need to be cautious still. Um, but, but for sure, it will be a game changer, but if, if they can get a, a solid vaccine in place.
I do have another, I do have another question, but board members, if you have one, uh, please proceed.
I wanted to, first, I, I'm going to have a couple of questions regarding, um, some issues that were mentioned in the public comments. But Dr. Downing, are you going to be continuing with, um, would you like me to hold those until you have finished with the rest of your report?
If they relate to uh, Dr. Parker's presentation, I would ask them now. If not, uh, there will be, you know, multiple opportunities to ask any questions of staff.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, so since mine is directly related to uh, what you were just talking about with regards to when and if there is a vaccine. In your professional opinion, uh, what are your thoughts with regards to the progress of the vaccine worldwide? I know it's vast.
Yeah.
What is your position?
Hard to keep up with, right? Um, there's a lot in phase three, uh, right now. There's quite a few trials. Um, but it takes time to make sure that it's safe, that it doesn't do more, more harm than, than good. Um, it's, there, there are some promising leads out there, but it's going to take time. Right? Yeah, you can't, you can't rush up the process, really. Um, you, there, there's no way to, to just kind of speed up the process to make sure that they're actually safe. And then once you have that, then it goes into production. I think at this stage, at this point in time, we'll probably be much better than we have been in the past at actually producing it, once we know that it's safe. But then it's still an issue of delivery. You know, you have to keep vaccines under certain conditions. Like, probably you're going to have to keep them in negative 20 Celsius freezers and, and you have to have a cold chain. There's, there's lots of complications, complications in place there. Um, but I, there, there are some, there are some promising ones out there. Just, you have to, you have to let science run its course so that we know that it's safe for everybody or safe for almost everybody before, before we roll it out to everyone.
Uh, and, and board members, right now, uh, I, I know that the presentation is continuing, but since we have Dr. Parker here, I'm not sure if you'll stay throughout the presentation. Uh, I know a lot of the data that you've been presenting to us is primarily quantitative. Uh, is there any qualitative research that at this time, you think that would be, uh, important for us to know in making this critical decision for our communities?
Oh, gosh, a lot. Um, and, and I mean, uh-
In relation to Orange County or particularly the hotspots that we are currently in?
Right. I, I mean, there's so many, so many anecdotal stories that I hear. Um, it's, it's hard, it's hard to relate it all. Uh, and I can, I, I'll focus. I mean, we're all living through really difficult times right now. This is a traumatizing time. Um, I mean, for, for lots of reasons, not just epidemiology, but the economy, uh, schools, it's, it's a very difficult time. Um, but I just, I, I feel like it's, it's difficult when you have, um, especially if you're in situations where people need to work, where they can't stay home, um, where you have crowded households, uh, multi-generational households, people with comorbidities. Um, and, and I've, uh, I mean, we, we have students that are working with us on contact tracing. We've had family members die from it. Um, and they're, uh, it's, it's, it's a terrible disease. Um, you know, it's, um, uh, so, uh, I, 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 for, for me, the, the qualitative data, what it does is it just kind of adds a human context to the numbers. Right? So, so every one of those deaths, that's a, that's, I can't have a meltdown for every single one of them, but that's, that's someone's life. That's someone's family member, right? That's, that's a big deal, but-
And I'm sure a lot of the research is new with particular, this particular pandemic, but I'm more curious with regards to qualitative research or even quantitative research on schools that have reopened. I know this is super new. Uh, I know this is just in the last couple of months, but um, anything out there yet that any professors or anyone in research are, uh, starting to, uh, come out with?
So I mean, uh, so I think the university's really kind of had a head start and you've seen a couple of, uh, a cup, uh, there've been lots of outbreaks, right? Um, but you've, you've also at the same time seen massive, massive efforts, um, to, to kind of try to control it. So you have, uh, University of North Carolina has one of the best public health programs in the nation. I don't know that they listen to their public health folks so much when they open back up, but uh, they quickly had outbreaks. Notre Dame has had outbreaks. Penn State has had outbreaks. Uh, I, I think basically, basically you just have to be prepared because depending on what's going on in the communities that the, that the students are coming from, that's, that's going to be reflected in your schools, right? There's no way around that. So, so if there's a heavy caseload in that community and that's where the kids are coming from, then they're going to bring, there's no way around that they'll bring infections with them. And then it just becomes a matter of, of whether or not you're ready to deal with it. Um, can you react really quickly? And if necessary, are you, are you prepared to, to shut things down again if you need to, if you, if you can't control it? Um, and that's, that's been our take at UCI as well. Um, so, so some students are coming back now. Um, it's, it's going to be much smaller than, than a normal situation. We're not having in, in-person teaching, um, and we're testing all of them every week. That's, that's a massive ordeal.
Thank you, Dr. Popper. Parker, one more question. Dr. Philbeck, with regards to-
Um, just a clarification, kind of. I was wondering, um, Dr. Parker, if you agree with this. I did see a webinar today, in fact, on a vaccine, some Dr. Singh from CHOC. And one of the takeaways was that, you know, that we discussed development of the vaccines and, and all the different layers of that, but that when the vaccine availability, you know, when it comes availability, it's going to be phased out to ensure protection, first of all, for like essential workers and the most vulnerable populations. Because I think everybody thinks, yay, there's a vaccine. Where do we go get in line, just like the flu shots? But, so it's not going to be like that, correct? And then-
Highly unlikely, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so if they are going to phase that vaccine out to the, uh, essential workers and vulnerable populations first, what's the timeline on that for when they start that to when like I, I go get my shot? Or, um, Dr. McGallas goes, gets his, you know, when it's available to us? Is it months? Is it, is it weeks? Is it months? What's your opinion on that?
Uh, so, so now we're getting into a realm where I'm just going to have to guess, honestly, but I, I would guess months.
Months?
I would guess, yeah.
It's kind of what it sounded like in the webinar. So I think it's important for everybody to know too, that just because a vaccine is, becomes, you know, is, it gets done, it doesn't mean that we're out of the woods.
Yes, exactly.
That we all just line up like flu shots.
And there's still so much about immunity that we don't know. Um, so how long will the vaccine actually protect you for is another big question, right?
That was, yeah.
It could be, it could be that we're back in the boat where the, the vaccine is protective, but you have to retake it every year, right? Um, which is, if you look at other coronaviruses for sure, so, so if you look at natural immunity to the normal coronaviruses that, that humans get, it's around four of them. Um, you lose that immunity essentially every year. So you can get that coronavirus every year. If this one, we don't know if this one is like that yet. We haven't had it long enough to do the proper studies. Um, but it does look like people, the antibodies and people who've been infected, they do, it does look like they wane over time. Um, that makes me think that even if we do have a, a vaccine that works, you're going to have to repetitively have it.
Thank you for that.
Just another level of complication, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Parker at this time? Thank you so much, Dr. Parker. Dr. Downing, oh, okay. All right, Dr. Downing, you may proceed.
Thank you. Iris, we're going to return to the presentation. Thank you. So board members, in addition to having this presentation with our school reopening advisory committee from Dr. Parker, because as a district, we want to be transparent and we want to work with our partners to provide the most recent and accurate information as possible. We have also, as part of this process, taken the input of stakeholders. Next slide. And this is a graphic that demonstrates that on our S R A C, it consists of district employees, parents, as well as community members. Next slide. And as part of our process, we receive input, we look at resources, and then we identify options that are now being moved to the board for your consideration this evening. Next slide, please. So here is a listing, again, of the committee meeting dates for the S R A C, as well as the committee composition. And as you can see, it consists of PTA members, DAC D LAC members, Creativity Council members, Anaheim Community members, parent reps, association leadership, parent representatives, members from our Citizens Oversight Committee, all of our units, Board of Education members, as well as cabinet members participate in the process. Next slide. And in addition to just meeting with the S R A C, we're proud that we've also put out a parent survey. We've had a staff survey, and both our parent and staff surveys had over 2,000 respondents. We met with our LCAP, and also in that meeting, we had our DAC D LAC leadership. We met with our PTA, and we've also met individually with our associations to identify concerns and identify how we can safely reopen if the conditions are present for that reopening. So at this time, everyone, I've invited Tracy Golden to participate in our presentation. She's going to talk to you about some of the safety measures that our district has in place and will be putting in place.
All right. Good evening, everyone. As Dr. Downing said, these are some safety measures that we actually have already in place and we will continue to have in place when students return. Next slide. We, regarding face covering, we, as a district, will be requiring all staff and all students to wear face coverings. And we will also be providing every staff member and every student with five cloth masks as sort of a beginning inventory, but they can be ordered later on as they get, you know, broken or worn down or lost. We will also have disposable masks available in every building, every classroom, so that if there's anyone that, you know, forgot their mask for the day or they lose it or, you know, they need another one, those will be available also. We also have a disinfection and sanitation schedule. We are disinfecting daily at night with our electrostatic sprayers. And that's in every building, every classroom, every office space. But then throughout the day, we are also disinfecting all those frequently high-touch areas, such as doorknobs, you know, the sinks in the bathrooms, et cetera. Hand sanitizers are available at every door in every building. And then we are also providing the P P E, which is that personal protective equipment that is recommended by the healthcare agencies for those specific circumstances that that require extra protection. So that would include the disposable gowns, surgical masks, gloves, face shields. And then, in addition to that, we are also providing extra barriers for teacher and student desks. And we do have a picture of that later in the slideshow, so you can see an example of what that looks like. Next slide. I also want to talk a little bit about in this concept of cohorts. So a cohort is a stable group of people. And for our our purposes, it's no more than 16 people in which that adult and children stay together for all activities. They don't interact with other people outside of their group. And the reason for the the cohorts is that we want to make sure that we try to minimize the number of people who are exposed if we do have a COVID-19 positive case. So keeping them within their cohort, or sometimes they call them pods, will help reduce the contact racing that we have to do and prevent exposure on a larger scale. Next slide. Also, just wanted to kind of look at a couple of definitions or words that we might run into when we start to reopen. First is quarantine, and a lot of you probably have heard that once someone has come into close contact with someone who has tested positive for COVID-19, it is recommended that they quarantine for 14 days and kind of monitor their symptoms. And close contact is is defined as less than six feet apart and for more than 15 minutes. So in that case, if if a cohort has to quarantine, then the instruction will have to change to distance learning. There's also a possibility of school closures. A school may switch to distance learning when there are multiple positive cases in multiple classroom cohorts. There isn't really a percentage or a number definition for this. This decision is made in collaboration with the healthcare agency. So the county public health officer is the one that makes that decision about whether or not to close a school. So any positive cases that we have within the district are reported to the Orange County Healthcare Agency, and then they consult with us about what to do next. So that would be made, that would be a decision made in collaboration with them. However, the California government website does have a metric for a district closure. And theirs is if 25% of the schools in the district are closed within a 14-day period, then they recommend the district close and switch over to distance learning. Next slide. Also, just real briefly, talking about screening procedures that are in place. This is for every person that comes onto our campus, so whether they are an employee or a visitor or a student. And the screening procedures, in some form or another, require a temperature check and symptom questions that are asked in some form. So next slide. For our employees, we are screening the symptom questions online right now. And we're looking to possibly partner with an outside vendor to do that, to help us with it. And basically, asking those symptom questions, have you been in contact with someone who tested positive for COVID-19? Do you have any of these symptoms? And then we also do a temperature check. For students, similar process, but the parents are going to be doing the self-screening at home as far as the symptom check. And then students will be having their temperatures checked when they come to school. For all our visitors coming onto our campuses, the visitors are orally asked the questions, the symptom questions, and then they're also having a temperature check before they're able to enter any of our buildings. And that's, next slide. And that's the end of my part. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Downing, unless there's any questions.
Okay, then we will continue. So we've identified some stages of return to in-person instruction. Through June and August, our M and O team ensured all classrooms had desks separated for physical distance and that our rooms do not exceed a total of 16 persons. In July 30th, our administrators returned to schools full-time. Our administrative teams received training on screening protocols, temperature checking, and required P P Es and social distancing. And we delivered all P P Es to schools to support onsite staff. In August, our school office staffs returned to schools full-time. Our offices opened to the public by appointment, and our office staffs received training on screening protocols, temperature checking, and required P P Es and social distancing. Stage two, next slide, please. Stage two included August 11th, all of our instructional aides, technology assistants, library media assistants returning to campus and receiving training to support distance learning. Our campus supervisors returned to campus full-time to support our daycare program, our grab-and-go student supplies. And we want to thank our campus supervisors for their outstanding efforts to support our schools during this time, as well as all of our staff members. Trainings were held by administrators to support safety procedures and required daily screening. And all staff on campus received training on screening protocols, temperature checking, and required P P Es. On August 13th, we began our distance learning-only format by decree of the state of California. And all teachers and instructional aides in our stage three will return to campus. P P Es will be provided to all staff, health screening protocols are in place, and daily free COVID-19 testing will be available at identified locations. And as we're all aware, there is the Anaheim Convention Center super site, but we are also in communication with the Orange County Healthcare Agency about doing something within our district as we move forward. Next stage, or stage four. And again, when we return to in-person instruction, it will consist of our blended learning schedule. It is our intent that our preschool students return to in-person learning one day per week, that our S D C TK through six students return to in-person learning five days per week, that our S D C pre-K students return to in-person two days per week, as well as our general education students TK through six return to blended learning two days per week. Next slide. So possible reopening dates. And again, we shared two options with our school reopening advisory committee. Next slide, please. In option one, it would have had our preschool teachers returning to campus on November 2nd, with our preschool students returning November 9th. And then on November 30th, we would continue our staggered re-entry of our TK through six S D C students, our PK S D C T K K. And then on December 7th, our first through sixth grade students. In option two, which again provides us an additional six weeks before our preschool students would return to campus on November 30th, it would also give us the ability to build our capacity. Our preschool, we have a total of about 650 students spread out across our 23 schools, physical schools, and it will allow us to work with those students to provide that extra training that a three- and four-year-old will need to maintain their mask in the classroom and around the school campus. Again, with this plan, on January 11th, our TK through six S D C students will return, and then our PK S D C and T K K students would also return on January 11th. As a reminder, on January 18th, it is Martin Luther King's birthday. So on the 19th, our first through sixth grade students would return for blended learning two days per week. Next slide, please. So we'd like to show you in working with our committee, as well as surveying our staff, what our data says. Next slide. So in our meeting, we actually polled our participants. And as you can see, for option two, we had 96.7% versus 3.3% for option one. And 121 respondents gave us a vote regarding this matter. And just as a reminder, all of our stakeholders were represented, a parent for every school, as well as our parent leaders, as well as our asthma, C S E A, and A E A representatives. Next slide. So in surveying our staff, what we found is that 89% prefer option two and 11% actually feel like the conditions warrant us supporting option one, which would be, again, bringing students back as soon as November 9th. But 89%, nine out of every 10 respondents, again, supported option two.
How many teachers per school?
How many teachers, I'm sorry?
You said earlier that there was one parent per school that was surveyed. How many teachers per school were surveyed?
Also, one parent, one teacher per school, as well as A E A leadership participated in the committee. Thank you for that question. Next slide. So there are advantages to us reopening with option two. First of all, Plexiglas screens for all student desks will be installed. We are also adding an additional layer of protection to purify the air. We have identified the Remy Halo LED system that produces a hydrogen peroxide compound that goes into the air, attaches to any virus and kills it while producing a self-cleaning ionizer. We've already received 350 of these filters, and they are being installed in all of our preschool classes, as well as our daycare classes, to ensure that those students that would return first would benefit from, again, this new HVAC upgrade. Additionally, we are working with C S E A about the recruitment, training, and assignment of new school safety assistant positions. These positions would provide a staff member who could maintain social distancing at our bus stops, could ride on the bus to also maintain social distancing, then arrive at the school and assist with wiping down high-touch areas, keeping students safe within the hallways. There would also be school safety assistants at every school to assist our staff with the screening of students as they enter our campus. Additionally, with option two, we will have the completion of our brand-new, amazing Sunkist Elementary School. And as a result, it will free up key and allow us the opportunity, as a district, to support COVID testing. Additionally, with the return of our stakeholders to Sunkist, this will free up 16 bus routes and make eight buses available on a daily basis. And as we move our staff back into Roosevelt, an additional 14 bus routes would be freed up and seven buses available. And these are advantages to us reopening with our option two. Next slide. And this just gives you a illustration of the Remy Halo LED system. And Jesse, is there any additional information that you would like to provide regarding the Remy Halo LED system?
Well, like you said, Dr. Downing, we we ordered across the district, there's a need for 1,200. 350 will be arriving tomorrow morning. We have identified, you know, the need for our preschool and YMCA childcare to be installed. Those are our priority, as well as all the offices or spaces where current employees are working in. So we asked our principals to share with us a school map identifying those specific rooms so we can put a plan in place. The great thing about this Halo LED system, you know, besides, you know, fighting the bacteria, the other piece of it is also gets rid of allergens, particulates, dust. So it actually provides for those students that may suffer from asthma and other allergies. It's actually very helpful for them as well.
Thank you. Next slide, please.
I'm sorry, if we can go back to that slide, I have a question for Mr. Chavarria. How many did you say we had to order?
1,200.
Okay. And is this like an entirely brand-new system then in response to this? Or were ours just outdated?
No, so so the guidance from the C D P H says that you have to get up to a MIRC-13 quality level. But given that the HVAC systems in some of our schools are older, they cannot sustain a MIRC-13 type of filter. So the guidance states if your systems are older, then make modifications to get you to that air quality level. So we have installed, you know, upgraded our filters. We're, we're receiving what they call a four-ply filter that also gets sprayed with the specialized agent to do away with the, with the microagents that's coming next week. So every filter system will also be changed with that. So just with the four-pies filter, we would be in compliance with the C D P H. But this additional system will actually take us to a hospital-quality grade level. So thus making our air quality even, you know, as good or even better than what the guidance is suggesting.
Awesome, and and sorry, not to get too into the weeds of things here, but in regards to our older, like, systems and whatnot, have we, have they, are they able to handle this new type of system that we're putting in? Handle this new type of system that we're putting in? Or have we had to do any type of updates in regards to our air ventilations, et cetera?
No, every system that we have will sustain this new uh because it's not really affecting the system itself. It it gets installed in the ducking system. So as the as the as the air flows through there or the particles or the virus. It's an ultraviolet light in the duct system that kills it. And then it kind of releases the specialized particles that kind of attach to anything that is in the. In the air as well as in any surface. It attaches to it and then takes it back into the system and eliminates it again.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh next slide, Iris. So uh board members, these are sample of the teacher and student. Uh they're called sneeze guards, but they are Plexiglas. And as you can see on the left, uh there is the teacher desk with the Plexiglas Plexiglas sneeze guard setup. Uh you will see black lines on all of our sneeze guards. These are because the sneeze guards that we are purchasing will be foldable. And every staff member will receive one for their desk and their station. But our students, although we would be in two cohorts within a class, would have their own. So they would not be sharing a screen guard, if you will. Also, on the picture on the right, you will see a white rolling of Plexiglas shield. That would allow a teacher to be mobile in the classroom to use the whiteboard. But again, to separate themselves from the students. Uh not only through the student sneeze guard on their desk, but through this portable, again, mobile cart, if you will. Uh next slide. Board members, uh this evening, uh we're bringing you this recommendation. And we know that it is a difficult um decision that you are facing this evening. Uh what we are asking is that you support this recommendation. That we provide a timeline to our stakeholders on when we could safely return to school. Uh one of the things that we want to be clear, uh we've heard in Dr. Parker's presentation. There's a potential, you know, of a second wave. There's so much information that we've received about what could happen. I say to you, with your support of our recommendations, if it is not safe, then we will change our plan. So if there is guidance from OCDE or OCHCA, CDPH, Governor Newsom, there's a second wave. There's so many things that could potentially happen that would cause us to change our plan for the safety of all. We are a district that has prioritized the safety of everyone. We've outlined for you all of the different resources and materials that we will have in place. What we are asking is your support for this recommendation. And we're happy to address any questions at this time.
Uh I have a a couple, Dr. Downing, um just some clarification, since it came up in the the comments. Um and it was asked a few times, there was concern about us bringing in the little ones first. Can you clarify how that decision, what you how you made that decision and why to start with the little ones?
Yeah, there are six hundred and fifty preschool students. So this will give us an opportunity to stagger and return our youngest students first. Because we know they will need additional time to become familiar with consistently wearing a face mask. In addition, with our ECE students coming one day per week. This would mean that every student would come approximately two times before winter break. Um and again, with six hundred and fifty students, that would be our first step of reentry. Into uh our staggered reopening. The next group of students are on January eleventh, our SDC students, they would return for five days. But also again, the youngest students are TK and K, who would have that week. On uh less than what will be half-full campus to also become familiar with the processes and protocols. Finally, that following week, we would bring back the remainder of our students. Throughout this entire process, just know that our staff will be doing videos. We will have trainings at school sites. We will have our principal chats. Next week, uh pending your approval, we will also do a town hall and start the process. Of explaining what a safe reopening will look like to our community.
Thank you. And the second part of that is, and I'm not really sure you can have an answer to this. But if it has been discussed, what you can whatever you can offer is, you know, there is quite a bit of concern about the little ones. Um being a adjusting to not wearing the masks, to having their little meltdowns, you know, at the beginning. Uh I don't know if there's professional development around that or, you know, but the teachers seem to be a little. Uh confused about, you know, what they're going to do. And I just wondered if you have anything to offer regarding, you know, we're gonna hit that situation. I have a three-year-old granddaughter and she just, you know, I must have told her fifteen times, put the mask on. So what do you have to offer, just as even a comment regarding? What we're probably gonna look at when they when they get there that day.
Um I'll give you a two-part answer. First of all, we continue to learn from those districts that have returned and the strategies that they are putting in place. Uh it is our plan, uh pending your approval this evening, to immediately begin working with our ECE staff. Uh but it would be premature to have provided any training to them previous to a board decision. But um we've already alerted CSEA that this training and those meetings that were requested. Would take place to build their comfort level as their staff begin to return, our staff begin to return to our schools. I will say that um in our district, you know, our administrators have been in place since July twenty-ninth. And it is a transition. So bringing back all of the students at once would be irresponsible. Instead, a staggered approach, bringing back our youngest students first, providing the appropriate training to our staff. So that they are comfortable and able to support those students is our plan.
And then I'll just uh just lastly a comment and then I'll pass to another board member. Um I do appreciate the work that was involved in this plan. Um I I just want to say that it, my approval of this. This is not set in stone. And I think I won't speak for the other board members, but I think we're kind of along the same path. We're being propelled in this direction by the state by, and actually, you know, we have to address other parent concerns that want us to reopen. So we at least, I thank you for putting this together because I realize, you know, that. We have to at least show something in the event that that it's relevant for us to reopen. We have to show how we're gonna do that in-person instruction. But in my mind, this is in no way set in stone and I appreciate. That you've made it clear several times and I would not hesitate if there's an upswing in the numbers, if for any reason, I don't consider this. I consider it a plan. I do not consider it a reality yet. And I want to assure that, you know, um those that are listening and are parents that we will take the responsible path. And if for whatever reason, this doesn't work or it's not the timing or whatever. I know I won't hesitate to say, no way, not doing it. You know, put it back out there or we'll do, you know, something different. But I do thank you that I I know what the pressure you're under to, for us as a district to just show something. So I want everybody to just know that's what we're doing. We're showing something and it could be a reality. Or it could not be, but we won't hesitate to pull it back if it is not safe. Because I know in my perception and I think everybody else's safety is the number one concern for all of us. So we're just not steamrolling this. It is, you know, a recommendation that would is a good one. But we'll wait and see if it becomes the reality. So thank you for the work that you and the staff have done on this. And I'll pass to another board member.
Thank you, Trustee Philbeck. Board members, any questions at this time? Thank you, Trustee Willis.
Thank you. Um no question really, just a couple of comments I would just like to make um right now. First off, um Tracy, I just want to say that the screening procedures that we have in place. Um I'm speaking as a board member who visits schools regularly, et cetera. And on one day, I visited three schools and at every single school site, they took my temperature. And they asked me the required questions at every single school site, every single one. And then the next day when I went to visit other ones, um there was two that I visited in a single day, same thing, you know? And um please keep in mind that I have developed relationships with a lot of these um front office staff. I know the principals very well now, you know, and. No, it didn't matter who like that I was a board member or anything like that. They took the 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 safety of the school and the students and they just followed protocol. And I just want to applaud all of them um for being um so, you know. Taking it so seriously and just really holding true to the protocols that they are setting forth. So kudos to you guys. Um another thing too, I just want to point out that um obviously based on the presentation, I am. Completely in favor of um option two. Um you know, obviously the option that gives us, you know, an additional six weeks. Um and one of the reasons why I want to go with option two, um not just because of the fact that. You know, it 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 extends things, it's slower, it's it's slower process, et cetera. But I want to give a shout out to our teachers because the teachers are delivering, I think, online some amazing instruction. Um my nephew is a teacher in this district. Um I see him delivering his lessons. They're fantastic. I peeked into a few of the teachers' classrooms um with uh various principals. Um throughout, just popping in, students are always engaged. So I think that it would be something that I would be really panicking with right now if I was like, oh my gosh, option two. That's putting it back six weeks, et cetera. We should go back soon, et cetera. If I didn't feel confident that quality online instruction was being delivered. And um I I really do feel that that is the case. I just want to give a shout out to um all of our teachers uh out there. Um that are delivering this amazing instruction in a new virtual setting. So kudos to all of you and kudos for delivering such dynamic and engaging lessons. Um and then the last thing I just want to point out is that, you know, I do um. You know, it's it's one of these like kind of one of these things where you think about and you're like, oh my gosh, you know, we're sending back like. The little kids first and, you know, is that right, you know? I mean, but when you're looking at the big picture of things with the numbers and stuff, it makes more sense in the sense of that. Yeah, there's fewer in number and yeah, they are going to take more time um to learn to adjust to wearing the mask, et cetera. Um but we in this district, I believe, especially since joining on the pledge and the whole issue of teaching life skills, et cetera. This is a life skill that we need to teach kids right now um at such a young age, you know? I get it. It's going to be pretty traumatic in the sense that they have to wear these masks, et cetera. And this is a reality that they're not used to, but this is a reality that a lot of us aren't used to. And this is a part of growing up. And basically, um if we're able to more or less train our students and have them understand the importance of it. To just get in that habit of it, you know, um I think that we're doing uh uh. We're going above and beyond our roles as just educators, but really teaching them life skills as well as to. Wear a mask because it protects you and it protects others. Don't be selfish and just say, oh, I'm not gonna wear it because, you know, this this is too much. It's inconvenient. No, that's not who we are and whatnot. So I think it's very important that um we are starting with that select group, you know? I'm trying to be the the most optimistic I can and I talk with my own students in AUHSD about this. This is a horrible reality for all students and it sucks. I mean, it's horrible that students weren't able to participate in graduation. It's horrible that they weren't able to participate in promotion. It's horrible that they're not gonna go to science cap, et cetera. But this is the reality. So let's look at like the positive things of things and and let's just go forward. And to just once again, um in closing, to just reiterate what uh my colleague, Trustee Philbeck, said, you know. This is tentative and we are all basically going to put the safety and welfare of our students, their families and our faculty and staff. Number one, um before progressing forward. If we see uh that we have a large spike in numbers again after the holiday season. Then guess what? We're gonna have to push back again, you know? And yeah, that's a bummer, but once again, that is the reality. And if we were not delivering good quality uh materials to our students and lessons that are dynamic and engaging. I would really, really be super stressed right now, but we are. And so as a result, I feel totally confident in voting for option two. With the understanding, of course, that the health and safety of our faculty and staff and students and their families come first. And we can always push it back if need be.
Any other questions, board members? Okay, hearing none. Seven B, it is recommended the Board of Education approved the district reopening plan recommendations. From the School Reopening Advisory Committee, SRAC, on the safety reopening of schools for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year. Can I get a motion?
So moved, Willis.
So moved by Trustee Ross. Can I get a second?
Second, Philbeck. Discussion.
I have a few comments I would like to make. My understanding that this was the time to speak, so that's why I didn't ask these things earlier. I feel like the reality of our life right now is that we're being forced by the social political climate to make decisions. For life and death decisions for our families and it's like I feel knots in my stomach right now. Right? So it's it's really hard for me to kind of fathom the idea that human beings would force other human beings into situations where they could literally die. That being said, um I would like to make a motion to amend the plan a little bit. Uh I would like to make a motion to uh uh move the the start of preschool to January eleventh with the TK through six SDC students. As to not start them in November.
Dr. Downing, uh with regards to that amendment, does that mean that uh he uh we will be tabling this item? I'm a little confused with regards to amend. Can you give me some clarification with regards to amending that particular piece?
Well, a second to amend? Yeah, you need a second.
Okay, okay.
Energy vote on it together or separately.
Juan, can you explain a little bit more?
Sure. I'm a little concerned specifically with all the fear that we're getting from our preschool teachers and their fear. That's real fear about going back in November and then exposing their kids to potential danger and then having them carry. The COVID nineteen danger back to your homes. So I'm proposing that we start them in our plan, although we know it's tentative, right? Uh that we propose that we start them, uh the preschool students at the same time as a TK through six SDC would be, which would be January eleventh. So would do kind of be a rollout, but.
Okay, not till January.
Yeah, January eleventh would include the preschool as well as a TK through six SDC.
Okay, I I'll second that.
Okay, Board President, um you would ask for discussion on the amendment?
Uh can I get a discussion on the amendment?
Dr. Downing, what does that do though with the? The reasoning that you had in place to start the little ones? Separately earlier, maybe some more clarification on that. How would you feel about?
Well.
You know, you you as as per the explanation that you gave before, why we were doing it the other way before this amendment?
Wait, just real quick too, uh my clarification with Trustee Alvarez is. Uh because in the end of the day, going back on what you said, Trustee Philbeck, as we watch the numbers. As we watch what happens in the fall, as we watch what happens during the flu season. As we look at the numbers, because I'm in the same boat as you, Jackie Philbeck and uh Trustee Ruiz-Wellis with regards to uh watching this. Uh I am going to watch every single number, uh particularly, because my biggest concern is that we're in the purple. And the end of the day, even though the county of orange is in a different level, our numbers are higher. So I see uh your justification for this, Trustee Alvarez, is to move to January just because you feel that November is too early for the little ones. Is that correct?
Yes, and also just to take in mind all the fear that our employees have. And the fear that a parent might have who has a three-year-old going to our preschools, uh about being in so soon. And even though the, even though Dr. Downing explained November thirtieth would only mean two days of school for our preschool kids. a perception in my mind as a parent, when you say November 30th, that seems like my kids are going back two months before everyone else, right? So it just creates this fear that we could get rid of. And the only thing that would change would we'd still be starting our little ones on January 11th, right? Because it's TK through six SDC, but pre-K and TK on January 11th. So then we would just do preschool also on January 11th. And then the traditional track would be January 19th, first through sixth grade.
Okay, thank you. And Dr. Downing?
Not as extensive as Dr. Downing proposed.
Okay, Downing, can you answer trustee Philbeck's question? I apologize. I wanted that clarification as well.
Yes, although it's only 650 preschoolers coming in, it also means that all available staff at the site would be available to support that one group of students. So this would give us the opportunity again to bring back our youngest students for those two days of class and to transition in. Definitely, you know, with every district that's reopened, there have been lessons learned once they reopen. Again, that is why we made this recommendation to start with a group of 650 so that we can support them, provide them with the training. And as I said earlier, we commit to making sure that our staff receives the training necessary. So hopefully I I address board member Philbeck's question.
Board members, any other questions to trustee Alvarez's amendment?
Yeah, may I add something? It's two days of getting acclimated to preschool, right? Two days isn't a lot. But two months in the mind of a parent where you feel like there's a there's padding between your child and COVID-19, to me is more important to provide that parent that mental stability or the mental like awareness of like my child is going to be weaker for two more months. Even though it's only two days, it's like a mental thing, right? And I believe that two days, two days is not a lot. So it's not like we're going to give these students so much more time to get acclimated. It's just it's just two days, two days of extra services, two days of this. Although it is helpful, I believe for just the mental well-being of our staff, preschoolers and our families who have preschoolers, it would just make sense to just start the little ones all on January 11th.
I'm sorry, clarifying question. Trustee Alvarez, you're saying two days. You're talking about two days over like four weeks, right?
Yeah, so no, it's the way I understand it is because there's a holiday break in between in December, November 30th, and they only go once a week to preschool. They go the week of November 30th, a week in December, and then we'd be off on vacation. So there'd be padding in between there. So saying November 30th actually means two days before winter break and then going back to the cycle in January. But I think I think there might be a misconception with our staff and our parents that November 30th means our preschoolers go back and if they go five days a week, what's happening, right? So there is a misconception, but I I believe that just as a a show of just like support for our families and our employees, giving them that extra padding to start them in January 11th would be would go a long way with supporting them emotionally and
With all due respect, Mr. Alvarez, I want to ask Dr. Downing another question. If we did it that way, Dr. Downing, what do you see as any negatives or drawbacks to that? If we did it that way? Do you see any ramifications or any drawbacks or anything you could say? You know, that is more on the negative side? Or would you say? Yeah, that works too. What would what would your opinion of that be?
Board members, we're going to make it work. So you know, that's what our staff does. You know, our recommendation is that we begin the November 30th. You allow us to build capacity. You allow us to implement safety protocols. But certainly, we respect the decision that the board will make. And either way, we're gonna keep our staff and students safe.
Dr. Downing, would you say that we could still build that capacity with our employees prior to the January 11th, just like we could build it in the proposed manner, right? All the training for staff, all the acclimation of our teachers to the preschool classroom, all those things could still happen in a manner that is safe and makes our staff feel supported. Even if we started in January 11th, right? It's not like saying January 11th is gonna pull that training away, right? Nothing's gonna happen with regards to removing any potential training, right?
That's correct, sir.
All right. So just to clarify, any other questions for this amendment?
Yes, I had a question on this. I don't know if we have a more detailed breakdown of the surveys from the parents. But was there for parents of this particular age group or this grade for preschoolers? Were they opposed to the earlier start? If we have that data?
No, we don't have data specifically to address that.
So just to clarify with regards to procedure, Dr. Downing, we would first vote on the amendment?
That's correct.
And then after that, then we would vote vote on this entirely again?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for trustee Alvarez with regards to this change?
I like it. I have a question. Okay, so we vote on this first. And if it passes, then when we move to the amendment, to the items on the agenda.
The only change was the date for the preschoolers.
We would be approving that with a change?
With the amendment.
With the amendment. So we'd still be going forward and voting on the agenda item as far as the plan, but with amendment to the date from November 30th to January 11th as a start for everyone versus the little ones coming in on November 30th.
So clarifying, if not everyone starting on January 11th, Jackie, it would just be preschoolers, TK through six SDC, I believe, right, Dr. Downing? And then on the the 19th of January, the week after, then it would be one first through sixth graders coming back.
That's correct.
Okay, okay, got it. Okay, so.
Doctor, I'm sorry, Dr. McGillis, before we go on and vote, I just want to say that I, you know, I think that like literally when we we've looked at certain things, everything, I think that our district, I just want to give a shout out to Anaheim Elementary for being very inclusive and having lots of surveys and lots of input from stakeholders, et cetera. You know, I I do appreciate that, you know, just because of the fact that I think that you've all done a great job in the sense of hearing lots of different voices. With that said, I'm also going to go ahead and trust the educational leaders in Anaheim Elementary School District. And I'm gonna put my face in you all in the sense that you know what you're doing in the sense of this rollout and timing of it, because I'm sure that there's a a method to the madness, for lack of better terms, in the sense of why we would start with the selected numbers. And I'm sure it is to just, I mean, we need to make sure, you know, and based on the data that the professor from UCI presented, that is the lowest group that is affected as well. I'm not saying that like, oh, that's the lowest group. That's no problem. But what I am saying is that that is the lowest group that is impacted versus just one year in regards to that increase, which would be another grade level. So you know, I I just want to say that I appreciate you guys seeking input from everybody and hearing the concerns of the community. Thank you all.
I had one more question. For Dr. Downing, regarding our board schedule, when would be depending on which which item is approved, when would be be able to adjust any timelines that are already on the calendar, what we should be looking at if we needed to kind of what we call now pivot, it's kind of like those words. If that were, if that needed to happen?
Good question.
Our next board meeting would be October 28th, but we do have a board meeting November 18th, which is again the week before Thanksgiving, which would allow the opportunity to pivot.
Okay. But what about after the Thanksgiving holiday break? It won't be until December?
December 16th.
But then we could also do an emergency meeting at any time between within 24 hours, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I I okay. So just to clarify again, we are gonna do a vote just on the amendment. And then after that, we'll do another vote on the entire on 7B as a whole, correct? All right.
The amendment passes, yes.
All right. Does anyone have any more questions about the amendment? All right. No questions or discussion on the amendment?
Wait, what? So if we, so a yes, a yay is in favor of Mr. Alvarez's change amendment? A no is we stick with the original plan. Okay, okay, got it. Thank you.
And I had one more point of clarification on this, just because you asked for questions and discussion, is that I may be wrong, but just to clarify, are we talking about a an issue of just educating our community on what's, there's a lot of rumors. This might fall on deaf ears as well. But I'm just gonna ask anyway, is there is there a way just to make sure that we're educating the families and the community to let them know just in our outreach as far as what the plan is? Because I know that if there isn't a very explicit messaging that's going out, that there would there that leaves everything open to rumor and and panic in a lot of ways. So is is that where the issue is?
We will have a town hall as soon as next week. And we will additionally continue to communicate with parents about the reopening plan that is adopted this evening. We will allow opportunities for questions. And additionally, as part of the reopening process, we will reconvene our stakeholder group as we near closer to the proposed dates.
Right. I believe this is also by us time to educate those preschool parents, right? I have a five-year-old. He knows he needs to wear a mask whenever we go outside. It took him a few months of training, right? We've been in this pandemic for a very long time. I believe there probably already some three-year-olds that know they just wear a mask when they go outside. Right? So we can roll out some training between now and January between our preschoolers.
And Dr. Downing, as far as the guidelines that are propelling us and that we're being given through government states, you know, we would be okay with this if we push this back a little bit. We're not gonna be coming up, you know, to any big rocks or anything. We, is it a time that would we could work with that we'd still be sort of like in a compliance kind of setting as far as the guidelines that are being directed to us? Are we gonna get in any trouble?
We continue to meet the requirements of the state. I think, you know, on behalf of the stakeholders, us deciding on a proposed plan this evening goes a long way in terms of our district addressing all of the guidance that we receive from the state, which is to reopen.
All right. Any other questions on the amendment? And right now we are only voting on the amendment.
I just wanted to ask one other last question regarding other elementary school districts in Anaheim area. Because I know that it's kind of split amongst several different elementary schools and school districts. How does that timeline compare with those elementary school districts?
Some districts have not officially announced their reopening dates. We do have some of our neighboring districts that have already returned to school. We have others that, at least in their discussions that we've had as part of the Orange County Department of Education's meetings. I think the majority of them will be moving to reopen either November or December. That's my understanding. But if a district hasn't officially made had a board decision or announced it, you know, I'm just going by what we've heard and that's your thing. But that's where we are in terms of our neighboring districts.
Including AUHSD? Are we in sort of sync with what they're doing or do you know what they're doing?
Their board meeting is tomorrow. I did have a chance to participate in their reopening task force and it would appear that we are on the same path as the high school district. That's just, you know, from participating in the meeting and the perception that we have and looking at, you know, what has been happening in the district in terms of information that's gone out. So their board has a meeting tomorrow. So it would be premature for us to say exactly what they're going to do.
And to clarify, if we, I'm sorry, Mr. Lopez, I I cut in on you. Did you? It was, I'm piggybacking on what you're saying, but go ahead, finish.
Oh, okay. Well, my only other question was more of a kind of a point of order. If we vote on the amendment and it passes, will we still vote on the original motion? And if they both pass, I I don't know what the the protocol is. So you just explain that.
Amendment is passed, then basically when we vote, it's with the amendment added as such. And that is the new amendment or that is the new proposal that we are putting forward. But if the amendment fails, it goes back to the original proposal that was put forward.
That is correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Downing, and thank you, trustee Relus.
And if we, for whatever reason, decided if we went with this amendment and then we decided we wanted to put it back, we wanted to, you know, bring them in sooner, we have the option of changing it again or we're we stick with the way the amendment has it?
We always have the option of bringing it back, but it was required before. I believe, Chris, that would basically be off of the resolution that we gave to you, right? To make that decision.
That that we could change it. Okay, okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions on just the amendment? All right, let's vote on just the amendment for right now. Roll call vote, trustee Ruelas.
I'm sorry, can you repeat what the amendment was?
Is there like a?
I can repeat it if you want.
Thank you.
The amendment would be to change the opening day for preschool students to start school from the proposed date of November 30th to the January 11th date.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, roll call vote, trustee Ruelas.
No.
Trustee Philbeck?
Yes, I will support the amendment.
Trustee Lopez?
No.
Board clerk Alvarez?
Yes.
I vote aye. Passes three, two. All right. So Chris, do I reread 7B?
Yes, with the amendment.
All right. So 7B, it is recommended the Board of Education approve the district reopening plan recommended from the School Reopening Advisory Committee on the safe reopening of schools for the 2020-2021 school years with the past amendment. Can I get a motion?
I believe you don't need another motion because it's already been motioned to speak on this item. You just need to vote.
Okay, and no discussion either?
You can you can continue your discussion, yes.
Okay, let's continue the discussion. Anything else, board members? All right. Roll call vote, trustee Ruelas.
Aye.
Trustee Philbeck?
Aye.
Trustee Lopez?
Aye.
Board clerk Alvarez?
No.
And I vote no. It passes three, two. All right, moving on to eight, the consent calendar. Items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are acted on by the board in one motion. There is no discussion of these items unless a member of the board, staff or the public requests specific items to be discussed and or removed from the consent calendar. So at this time, do any board members have any items to remove from the consent calendar? Please tell me the number and page number.
Page seven, item eight, B8.
Page seven, item eight, B eight.
All right, any other board members? All right, hearing none. Hearing none, it is recommended the Board of Education, um, approve or ratify the following consent calendars with the exception of, uh, eight, B eight. Can I get a motion?
So moved, Rellis.
So moved by Trustee Rellis, can I get a second?
Second, Lopez.
Seconded by Trustee Lopez, discussion.
I'll just be abstaining, I'm on the Y board, and it's, uh, the usual consideration I give for possible conflict, so that's all, that was the only discussion.
All right, anybody else? Board roll call vote on everything in the consent calendar with except, exception of eight, B eight. Uh, Trustee.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Point of clarification here, Trustee Philbeck, you need to pull those, don't you? I mean, because you can't.
I did, I'm sorry, I just, I just didn't realize that we were, the motion was actually for the whole consent calendar.
Oh, yeah, 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 I'm sorry. Dr. Miguel, can we go back to the fact that she shouldn't be abstaining from the whole thing, if it's just those?
No, 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 no. I, I just caught that, I'm sorry, I apologize, I just had jumped ahead, so, yeah, I, I'm, uh, when we get to that other item, then I'll make the same comment, but for the motion that's above on us, uh, now for the whole consent calendar, yeah, I'm fine, so I, I will vote on that.
All right, any other discussion with regards to the entire consent calendar with the exception of eight, B eight? No, hearing none, roll call vote?
Aye.
Trustee Philbeck.
Aye.
Trustee Lopez.
Aye.
Board Clerk Alvarez.
Aye.
I also vote aye, passes five, zero. All right, everyone, let's go ahead and move to page seven. So page seven, item eight, B eight. Uh, it is recommended the Board of Education approve for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, an independent contractor agreement between this district and the Anaheim Family YMCA at two four zero South Euclid Street, Anaheim, California nine two eight oh five, to provide care for a hundred sixty-five students in the Anaheim Achieves All Day Program to accommodate uh, families in need due to the COVID pandemic through January twenty twenty-one. Priority will be given to families of essential workers and students identified as foster youth and homeless. The monthly rate is two hundred seventy-seven dollars per child per month. The fee shall not exceed that of a hundred eighty-two thousand eight hundred and twenty. Can I get a motion?
So moved, Rellis.
So moved by Trustee Rellis, can I get a second?
Second Alvarez.
Seconded by Trustee Alvarez, discussion.
Sorry, I, now it's the right time. I'm on the board, I'm, I'll be abstaining, um, I support the side I'm all be abstaining.
Thank you, Trustee Philbeck, board roll call vote, Trustee Rellis.
Aye.
Uh, Trustee Philbeck.
Abstain, please.
Trustee Lopez.
Aye.
Trustee Alvarez.
Aye.
I vote aye, we have four ayes, one abstention, passes four with one abstention. All right. Give me one second while we move to the action calendar. Item nine. Nine A. Superintendent's Office, A one, it is recommended the Board of Education adopt Resolution Number twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one slash twelve, establishing guidelines for face coverings for individuals when they are in school buildings. Can I get a motion?
So moved Alvarez.
Second.
By Trustee Alvarez, seconded by Trustee Rellis, discussion.
I think that this is super important, and it really is going to be ensuring the safety of our students, and, um, I'm just all for this, so.
I completely agree, definitely, if we are to reopen, masks are essential. Uh, I also have seen some amazing things some, uh, schools have done with reopenings to promote students to, uh, uh, to do that, and I'm confident in our cabinet and our teachers that they will do the same. Um, any other discussion on this item? Hearing none, board roll call vote, Trustee Rellis.
Aye.
Trustee Philbeck.
Aye.
Uh, Trustee Lopez.
Aye.
Uh, Board Clerk Alvarez.
Aye.
I also vote aye, passes five, zero. Moving on to A two, it is recommended the Board of Education adopt Resolution Number twenty twenty dash two one slash thirteen, approving the new district reopening plan timeline that provides for the health and safety of students and staff. AESD schools will reopen for in-person and blended learning instruction between November thirty, twenty twenty and January nineteen, twenty twenty-one, as identified in the school reopening plan contingent, contingent upon the COVID nineteen rates that exist at that time. Can I get a motion?
So moved, Rellis.
So moved by Trustee Rellis, can I get a second?
Second Lopez.
Seconded by Trustee Lopez, discussion.
Don't we have to amend that now that we made this amendment to the proposal?
That's what I was gonna ask, I'm just looking at it going, wait. Didn't, how can we bring that as it?
Thirty, right?
Yes, an amendment would be appropriate.
So, when we propose this, Dr. Downing, we propose it as such, can, do we just say, I'd like to amend?
Well, I think it would be appropriate to have an official motion to amend, uh, and then vote on that, and, and then vote on the entire motion. Okay.
All right, I'll just make the motion, I would like to make the motion to amend, uh, the resolution, uh, to change the dates of this preschool students returning from November thirtieth to January eleventh in the resolution.
All right, can I get a motion for that amendment?
Well, just a second.
Yeah.
Oh, just a second, can I get a second for that motion?
Second Lopez.
Seconded by Trustee Lopez. All right. Um, so now discussion. Hearing none, board roll call vote, Trustee Rellis.
Aye.
Trustee Philbeck.
Aye.
Trustee Lopez.
Aye.
Board Clerk Alvarez.
Aye.
I vote aye, passes five, oh, the amendment passes, uh, five, zero. Uh, and, and again, just to clarify, uh, uh, Dr. Downing, do I read the entire section on A two with the amendment?
No, it passed.
Uh, okay, because it changed, okay. All right, uh, sounds good, passes five, zero. Moving on to three, it is recommended the Board of Education adopt Resolution Number twenty twenty.
No, no, that's not correct. The amendment passed, so now the resolution has the date of, the change of dates, so now we have to vote on whether the resolution will pass.
As amended, aye, blah, blah, blah.
My apologies, Board President, we haven't voted on it.
All right, so I reread that and add the amendment.
That's correct.
Two, it is recommended the Board of Education adopt Resolution Number two oh two, two zero two zero dash twenty-one slash thirteen, approving the new district reopening plan timeline that provides for the health and safety of students and staff. AESD schools will reopen for in-person and blended learning instruction between November thirty, twenty twenty and January nineteen, twenty twenty-one.
January.
Oh, um.
That's a change, January eleventh.
So January eleventh, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty-one.
Happy New Year!
Oh, yeah, duh, twenty twenty-one. Uh, again, AESD schools will AESD schools will reopen for in-person and blended learning instruction between January eleventh, twenty twenty-one, and January nineteen, twenty twenty-one, uh, as identified in the school reopening plan contingent, contingent upon the COVID nineteen rates that exist at that time. Can I get a motion?
Already been motioned.
Been motioned. And seconded. And it has been accepted, so now, any discussion, and then you would vote.
Discussion.
I guess the only question that I have then, and this is for, um, Dr. Downing and team, um, since we've made this adjustment in regards to this, and the rationale was to more or less kind of see how we would be able to, um, organize and implement the proper safety procedures with the six hundred plus, um, students, preschoolers, um, do we, or maybe this should be posed to Tracy, um, in your position, do you feel then that we need to adjust then the other start dates accordingly, or will that be enough time?
Well, um, I'll answer it. Um, I think we will, uh, make this work, and, uh, will provide the support necessary to implement instruction on the dates that have been identified.
Thank you, Dr. Downing.
Thank you.
And just to, to clarify, because I was on that reopening committee, um, just so people don't think that, you know, we weren't paying attention to that, there were just the two options, one and two, that were discussed by that committee. I mean, this wasn't one, and it, if had it been, it might have been the one that was chosen. So, um, you know, just to let everybody know that, that there was a lot of discussion, but just on item, uh, the, the first reopening and the second in that general reopening committee meeting, so.
But just a point of clarification, the, um, recommendations that was put forth, was that for the, um, uh, the, the, what month is it, November thirtieth opening, was, was that put forth by them?
Yes, but those were the only two options that were offered.
Correct, but that's what they recommended, is that correct?
That's what, between the two, yes. Dr. Downing, can maybe clarify that?
No, you're correct, there were two options and ninety-seven percent selected option two.
Okay, but they've never been proposed to the amendment that we just did right now, correct?
That's correct.
Gotcha, just wanna make sure.
That's what I was making the point of, is that wasn't a part of the, uh, reopening committee information at that time, so this is, you know, something we did and, and it might have been chosen, I don't know, but it wasn't presented, so. Just clarification.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion?
Uh, I just had, uh, two quick comments, the first is, uh, this, now that we're, uh, voting on the resolution to reflect the changes we made earlier in the agenda, uh, this is our new plan, and, uh, our, a plan is, uh, essentially an intention and a detailed proposal of what we are going to do, uh, but as with any plan, it by definition is subject to change, as we've seen it, it has already, uh, and it may very well continue to do so, so I just wanna make sure that we're all, or anybody out there in the public who's listening, that's still, um, something that might occur, and, uh, secondly, I, I think that everyone on this board uh, is on the same page with not being willing to ask of others more than we're going to do ourselves. We wouldn't ask more of our students, our families, we would not put them in harm's way, um, if the cases of COVID in the county and in our district happen to increase, uh, we'll definitely adjust that and to reflect, uh, new dates, I, I think that we're all, uh, in agreement on that. Um, so I just wanna say thank you for all of the, uh, discussion that we've had so far, and, uh, thank you, Dr. Downing and your staff for being nimble and flexible to the changes that occurred, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez, I think you put that very, very well. Um, and I know that I, I agree with you, and thank you, um, Dr. Downing, really, and all the staff, you know, I, we know this is a change, but as Mark said, it can be changed again, it's not set in stone, it is a plan, and we will go along and adjust accordingly, however we need to, but, um, thank you for the effort that you did put in, in getting us this far, in getting, you know, this planned out even with this minor change, thank you for all the, the work that you put in.
Thank you all.
Yes, Dr. Downing, Cabinet, everyone, uh, please know that I am extremely grateful for all of the hard work that you have uh, put towards this, I'm incredibly proud of all of you, I know these are very difficult uh, decisions and tasks that you've all undertaken, uh, but know that I will be watching the data really closely. If we do not get out of the purple, I will be, uh, opening another meeting, uh, come November or December. Um, and I'm really serious about that, even, uh, with regards to even the red zone. Um, so, um, but thank you so much for all of your hard work. Any other thing to discuss?
Um, nothing, I guess just a question, pretty much putting it out there for the rest of the board then, so I thought about this when Trustee Lopez was speaking then, so I'm gonna assume then that basically we're going to start planning to have our meetings again in real person then come January, is that, is that correct?
I think so.
Yes, we've taken precautions within the boardroom, and we can be socially distant, and I know that it has been the intent of the board that, uh, when we return to in-person, uh, board members have expressed that, you know, um, you would like to return in person, um, to be leaders of our district, so, yes, we will proceed with that.
Of course, I think that's only the right thing to do, so.
Yes.
Is there the opportunity to do it prior to that with the proper precautions? I know that some other groups, um, are, you know, county-wise and stuff are, are meeting with the proper safety precautions, or are we just gonna is plan to just wait till January?
Uh, we can address it in November, at the November eighteenth meeting.
Okay. I think I would like to do that, I mean, just to see, you know, if the proper precautions, not opening the boardroom necessarily, but we could be in the, in, you know, in the boardroom, but I don't know how anybody else feels about it, but at least maybe a discussion.
Well, maybe under future agenda items or board discussion, uh, we still have item, uh, eight, three, Board President?
Uh, we haven't voted on, uh, A two yet.
Two, and A three.
And A three, that's correct. All right, so, anything else to discuss with regards to A two? Hearing none, board roll call vote, Trustee Rellis.
Aye.
Trustee Philbeck.
Aye.
Uh, Trustee Lopez.
Aye.
Trustee Alvarez.
No.
I also vote no, but it passes three, zero. Moving on to A three, it is recommended the Board of Education adopt Resolution Number twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one slash seventeen, declaring October twenty-five, twenty twenty as Larry Itliong Day throughout the Anaheim Elementary School District. Can I get a motion?
So moved Alvarez.
So moved by Trustee Alvarez, can I get a second?
Second, Rellis.
Seconded by Trustee Rellis, discussion. Hearing none, board roll call vote, Trustee Rellis.
Aye.
Trustee Philbeck.
Aye.
Trustee Lopez.
Aye.
Trustee Alvarez.
Aye.
I also vote aye, passes five, zero. Moving on to Ed Services, there are none. Moving on to C, AC, Selpa, there is none. Moving on to AD, Human Resources. D one, it is recommended the Board of Education approve the salary increase on the certificated substitute teaching salary matrix as presented in Exhibit nine D point one, effective October fifteenth, twenty twenty. Can I get a motion?
So moved Alvarez.
So moved by Trustee Alvarez, is seconded by Trustee Rellis. Discussion. Hearing none, board roll call vote, Trustee Rellis.
Aye.
Trustee Philbeck.
Aye.
Trustee Lopez.
Aye.
Board Clerk Alvarez.
Aye.
I also vote aye, passes five, zero. All right, moving on to ten, board discussion. Ten A, board member activities related to school business, let's go ahead and begin with Trustee Rellis.
Um, so, yeah, I can't believe it's been three weeks since our last board meeting, um. I don't know about all of you, but I feel that everything's flying by, um. I know with the end of first quarter taking place, uh, last week, uh, that comment caught me by surprise, even though it didn't have, I think it's been scheduled forever, um, but, uh, there's a couple of things I wanted to just say, um, number one, I had a great time with a few of our other board members and cabinet as we went and explored beautiful Sunkist Elementary School, and I take a lot of pride in that school, just because of the fact that, number one, that is one of the schools in my district, um, but number two, I'm a lifelong, and I'm resident, and I have lived there in my But number two, I'm a lifelong, and I'm resident, and I have lived there in my house my entire life, the same house that I live in now, that was also my grandparents' house, and I used to drive by Sunkist all the time, having attended Benito Juarez, and it was on my route to church. So I'm so excited to see this school just revamped, and how beautiful it is, and how innovative, like, the classrooms are set up, and it's, it's literally, and, and the thing that really sticks out for me personally, that really, I was super pumped with, was the whole community space, which I think is going to be legit. A lot of our community members would benefit greatly from having that space available. And I just want that school, the way it's designed, it really has that appeal already, but to just be really just an open school for that community, and I'm just really excited about that. And other than that, not much else, other than I'm proud to say that I am a proud PTA member. It takes like one minute to sign up and get that taken care of for my five schools in Anaheim Elementary School District, Area Five. I will say, and I'm true talk right here, ladies and gentlemen, this is the first time that I've signed up for all five schools in my area. Signed up for, and realistically, I'm going to admit it, just Benito Juarez, because that's my alma mater. But this time around, we showed the love all around, and I'm just super excited about that. So my goal is to join a particular district every time. And it literally takes, no joke, ladies and gentlemen, five minutes. So please, if you haven't already done so, join your local PTA today.
Thank you so much, Trustee Willis. Moving on to Trustee Philbeck.
I also am a member of all of the schools in my district, but also several outside, and I'm working my way around the district. I'm, my intent is to try to join them all, so I'm, I'm working on that a few at a time. Just, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot going on in the city and in the county, and let me tell you, there's, there's a lot of discussions because of COVID and because of all the different changes and challenges that we're facing. So we had our first five commission meeting, and with about an hour's presentation on the analysis on Orange County childcare and workforce landscape. And that was extremely interesting, because, you know, there's a lot of complications there. And, and it's not just that, you know, we need space, or we need to get kids back into childcare. There's complications, because, you know, there's a lot of different working hours and times that are needed outside of normal hours. There's actually, there's waiting lists for some, and there's some classes they can't fill because of the certain timeframes. So it's just a discussion that's going to, that's really relevant right now. And First Five is trying to, you know, help partners work through that. So it was very interesting. I, I did also attend the school reopening committee meeting, and it was my first one. I took over for Dr. Magalas. Whoops, sorry. And it was really interesting. A lot of people had a lot to say, and I, I think there was, Dr. Downing, you might know how many people were on that, like, over a hundred, right?
Over one, over one hundred and thirty.
Yeah, and so that was really hard to have everybody take that big of an interest, and it just tells you how big of an issue this, this really is. And it's, it's very hard to make everybody happy. It really is, and, you know, I think that our, our board's commitment to go err on the side of safety, and as well as our cabinets and administrations, you know, will, will be okay. But we're kind of, you know, we, nobody can really tell what's going to happen just yet, but, Dr. Downing, I appreciate your commitment to make, how you said, you know, wherever we pit it, whatever we do, you will make it work. And you and Cabinet and the staff, and I just appreciate that comment from you so much, I really do. It gives me a great confidence that whatever we need, we do, we'll, we'll do it, and we'll do it right, and we have a very competent staff helping us get there. I also took the tour of Sunkist, and as Mr. Ellis said, you know, I mean, it was amazing, wow, I, I was just so impressed. I was really proud. It's just like, I just wanted to go get everybody and say, you've got to see this, come look at this, so the opening is just going to be phenomenal, but what, what a fantastic facility that's going to be in school and community place. So I'm happy to see that we're almost there on that. Today, as I mentioned before, there was a webinar, and the Dr. Jasit Singh from, she's Chox Infectious Disease and Vaccine Expert, and it was called Calling the Shots, How Vaccines Are Made and What We Know About the COVID Vaccine. That, again, was very interesting, and as we spoke with Dr. Parker before, you know, some of the key takeaways were what I had mentioned before about phasing out a vaccine. But also, I think one of the most important things we all need to remember is that despite encouraging progress on a COVID vaccine, we're still going to be, for a long time, in non-pharmaceutical interventions that are going to continue to be vital. Because, you know, I think they estimate about thirty percent won't get the vaccine, or for whatever reason, that means we're still going to be wearing masks, we're still going to have to be careful about social distancing. You know, we won't be out of the woods immediately when the vaccine hits. So just to kind of reiterate on that. And other than that, I think that, thank you for listening, and that's it for me.
Thank you, Trustee Philbeck. Trustee Lopez.
Thank you, President, Dr. Magalas. So it's been kind of a busy couple of weeks for myself, it sounds like, just kind of going with the theme here. Everybody else has been pretty busy with some of the activities that we've had in the district. And the first one for me was actually the very next day after our last board meeting, I attended our virtual Budget Advisory Committee, which I was a little concerned I wouldn't be able to stay the entire time. But Mr. Chavaria, I think one of his debut readings that he ran, and it only went thirty minutes. I think he did an efficient job, got through it real quickly, so I didn't even have to leave early to go to my next meeting, because it just concluded so quickly. So it was very informational, there's a lot of participation there, and like I said, efficient. So that was good. Couple of days later, on September twenty-eighth, I met with, met up with Ms. Philbeck and Dr. Grace, where we were at City Hall for our Flag Day essay winners. So we were able to get some photos from a safe distance with our masks on, of course, and just congratulate our Flag Day essay contest winners. So I want to congratulate them again for their awards during that ceremony. And I think the theme was what the flag means to me, according to Dr. Grace, so can't wait to, to read some of those essays, I haven't had a chance yet, but looking forward to it. And then a couple of days later, I attended the Jefferson July Coffee Chat. So Ms. Sandersong did a great job facilitating that meeting, again, another good turnout. Learned a lot more about Korean culture, so that was great. I, I was able to introduce myself with hello in Korean from my, I went to Korea like eight years ago, so that's all, all I remember, so, from my trip. So I was able to at least practice that a little bit. My accent might have been off a little bit, but that's okay. And then October first, again, it's, it's been mentioned already a couple of times, our Sunkist Elementary Tour, we were able to see all the great construction that's been going on, see all the facilities, it looks, it's a fantastic looking campus. I'm looking forward to the Roosevelt one next, which is in my area, so I will, I'll be happy to welcome Mr. Ellis to that. And then immediately after that, I attended a, another virtual community meeting for a park proposal, which is current county land. Let's see, Anaheim is, is considering purposing it and repurposing the area along the flood control as a city park. And the reason I mention this is because this is my second official act as an ex-official member of the city park commission. As you know, their, their meetings are always the same day as our board meetings, so I'm never able to attend any of their events. But recently, just because of the schedule, this is now the second one, and I think about as many months that I've been able to attend. And next Wednesday, they're having their second meeting on this, so I'll, I'll be able to attend that one as well, so. Works out. And then on October seventh, I participated or attended the LCAP Advisory Committee Meeting, and also was able to join some of our PTAs. In my area, I joined six of them, so. And just as Mr. Ellis had mentioned, it only takes a minute to join each one of them. So it's, it's, it's great to be plugged in in the community, to know really on the ground what's going on on a daily basis, just so, show that support. So really, I, I can't say any better than Mr. Ellis did, but please join your local PTA. And with that, I'll conclude my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Lopez. Board Clerk Alvarez.
Hi, thank you. Just want to mention that Dr. Downing actually joined every PTA. I had some intel that let me know about that, so thank you, Dr. Downing. All right, so I, I spent the last couple of weeks attending different coffee chats with the principals. The first one I went to was on the twenty-fifth at Horace Mann. And I went on the eighth, I attended two of them, I went to the coffee chat at Patrick Henry, and then the one at Marshall. Very similar structure, although each principal has their own style of disseminating information. They are kind of connecting with each other as much as they can, right? The faces do a familiar job of getting all the information that we need up to us as parents. I'm one of the distributionists for Horace Mann, so I always get the most up-to-date news about Horace Mann through the faces. Want to commend the principals and the faces, they, they basically pretty much have an open forum for parents to discuss anything that's on their mind. Some principals have kind of like a presentation, and then they give question and answer. Some principals just allow the whole forum to be open, and they do questions with the parents. So I really do appreciate those coffee chats happening, just a matter of us figuring out how to get more parents to connect. But other than that, they're a great asset to our toolbox to connect with community. So I'm glad they were able to attend some of those. A couple of them I attended in their Spanish session, I just wanted to get a different context of how our immigrant parents are connecting, and they are asking the same questions, they have the same concerns, and so they're just as engaged. Engaging and asking the hard questions, or asking really hard questions. And sometimes we don't have the answers, and sometimes we have to learn patience, but it's all good, we're having the conversations. I also attended the Sunkist construction site, literally floored, literally floored about what I saw there. The amount of precision and thoughtfulness and just innovation that's going into this construction is amazing. And so it makes me really proud to see that work, and I want to thank all of our, our team that's on, on that site. Because it's really a phenomenal thing to look at. It's not even complete yet, so I'm looking forward to what we can do in other neighborhoods as we continue our construction projects. So I'm really excited about those. I also attended the school reopening committee. Really proud of how we've connected with all our stakeholders and getting real input. Everything that's posed out there is genuine, that all the input that's being taken and is seriously considered. And it's really obvious when we attend these meetings that our district does care about our community and what they, what they feel and how, how they connect to us as stakeholders. But I want to commend Dr. Downing for making sure that, and, and Cabinet for making sure that we are being as inclusive as possible. Even regarding to, even though Dr. Philbeck mentioned putting out a survey, we're surveying our parents and our community and our teachers ahead of, and we have been getting input ahead of time and collaborating with our association, and that's happening, so I appreciate that. And I just wanted to have a quick just conversation about the idea of a hybrid, a hybrid model that we're looking at. I'm a little concerned with the amount of change a hybrid model is going to be causing in the dynamic of the home structure with our families and within the dynamic of the
Board Clerk Alvarez, I'm sorry, I, I don't think that we can do that at this time. I apologize.
Okay, so.
Unless, unless that's okay, Dr. Downing, is I.
You can agendize it to discuss it at the next meeting, but this is about board reports of what we've done.
Agenda, yeah.
Sorry, Board Member Alvarez, but I think with regards to future agenda items, you could definitely.
Okay, I'll bring it up. Thank you. Other than that, that's a conclusionary part, thanks.
All right, thank you so much, Trustee Alvarez. All I have to report to everyone, and I, and I apologize, usually around this time I will also join all of the PTAs, but I've only joined Barton and Stoddard. I haven't gotten paid in four months, and I got a huge significant decrease in my salary, so, but I promised Ross. Madison, you're next on the first. All right, with that said, let's go ahead to eleven, future agenda items. Board members, do we have any future agenda items?
Trustee Philbeck. Yeah, and, and I'd also like to thank Trustee Lopez for remembering the Flag Day, the Flag Day event that I, and for kindly mentioning that I was also there, I forgot to mark that down, so. Thank you, Mark, I appreciate that. Yeah, I, I wanted to mention that I found out this week that our own, well, I think I mentioned at the last board meeting report that I had validated for a Golden Bell, being a CSBA delegate. We, we validate, you know, we're sent out, or, or we validate different applications that come in from the schools, and I had validated one for Hopeview Elementary, I believe it's in Huntington Beach. And the reason I mention it is because they had, I believe they did receive the award. And the, they had a guide dog, they have a guide dog program, which is phenomenal there. Well, I was contacted by our own Mary Madrigal, who also has, is in, I believe, a guide dog association, and she even has a puppy. So if it's appropriate, at some point when we are back in session, I think she would love to come and show us what she does with this program. And, you know, perhaps invite her, and she said she could bring her puppy. So, Dr. Downing, if that would be appropriate, maybe sometime next year, she might be able to come and give us a little demonstration of what she does, I mean, she's one of our peoples, and, you know, we love her, and, and I think it's kind of really interesting what she does, and so it would be kind of nice to see that, and who knows, maybe at some point in the future, it might be something that we could even look into, so. That would be something I would like to, I don't know if it needs to be on an agenda at some point, but maybe be looking ahead next year for a time, I would appreciate it, if it, if so, if it's appropriate.
Thank you, thank you so much, Trustee Philbeck. Any other board members have any items to add on the future agenda items?
Yes.
The idea of a hybrid model and rethinking about it at a future meeting, thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Alvarez. Trustee Lopez.
Yeah, thank you. I, I wanted to formalize this request that we look at, because we, we've talked a lot this evening and in recent weeks about a lot of the kind of negative effects of our current reality, a lot of the economic doldrums that are going on. But I, I did, throughout this entire process, want to just ask that we consider and look at different opportunities and possibilities of refinancing any bonds that we have, if there's any options that we could save our taxpayers any money during this time, because we all know interest rates are at lows right now. Many homeowners have refinanced, and I think that if there's any opportunities or possibilities that we do that, I'd like to agendize that opportunity, that we jump on that as well, and get something in the queue as, as soon as possible, and that we explore that, it's at least worth a discussion. I think if we can save, I'm not an accountant, but I would imagine it would be a, a large sum of money that we could probably save if we look into it. So I'd like that we at least explore that as an option. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Lopez. Trustee Willis, anything? Future agenda, no? I don't have anything either. So with that said, let's move to twelve, our adjournment. I adjourned this meeting at approximately nine fourteen PM. Our next board meeting will be Wednesday, October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty. Everyone, be safe out there, and wear a mask.